Good evening and welcome. We are going to begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'll ask my colleagues to please unmute and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Because this is a remote meeting, I'm going to ask Ms. Sullivan to please call the roll.
Dr. Coleman.
Present.
Mr. DeRouge.
Here.
Ms. Mercer.
Present.
Dr. Rivera.
Here.
Ms. Robinson.
Present.
Mr. Tran.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill.
Here.
Ms. Oliver Davila.
Present.
All members are present.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sullivan. I want to remind everybody that tonight's session is being shared live on Zoom. It will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and also on YouTube. For those of us, for those of you, excuse me, joining us on Zoom or at a later date, you can find tonight's meeting documents posted on the committee's webpage, under the April 28th meeting link. The agenda, presentations, and equity impact statements have been translated in all of the major EPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The committee is pleased to be offering live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabo Verdeano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. I will ask the interpreters to introduce themselves and then we will activate the interpretation icon, the globe at the bottom of your screen. Click the icon to select your language preference. Our Spanish interpreters this evening are Mr. Juan Bernal and Mr. Randolph Dominguez. And I'm going to ask Mr. Bernal to please introduce himself and give Zoom instructions in Spanish. And Mr. Dominguez will be joining us a little bit later in the meeting.
Thank you, but I'm sure distinguished members and audience. My name is Juan Bernal, I am the Spanish interpreter. I will be providing simultaneous interpretation for those who speak Spanish. And I will now proceed to explain how to access the interpretation icon. So they can hear my simultaneous interpretation. We will be taking turns of 30 minutes with my colleague, Mr. Randolph Dominguez. Muy buenas noches para todos, mi nombre es Juan Bernal, soy uno de los interpretes simultáneos de español asignados a esta reunión. El día de hoy vamos a estar alternando con mi colega, Mr. Dominguez. Cada 30 minutos en intervalos de 30 minutos para la interpretación. Aquellas personas que necesiten el servicio de interpretación, busquen en la parte baja de la pantalla un icono redondo que parece un globo terráqueo. Van a apretar y seleccionar el idioma de español para poder escuchar nuestra interpretación simultánea. Aquellas personas igualmente que estén llamando de un teléfono celular van a buscar los tres puntos que aparecen en la parte superior derecha de sus pantallas. Seleccionan el icono de interpretación que aparece como interpretation en inglés y seleccionan español. Muchas gracias a todos, que disfruten la noche, gracias por su presencia. Thank you very much.
Gracias. Our Haitian Creole interpreters are Mr. Sergio Saint-Hilaire and Ms. Nadette Sully. If you could, please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Haitian Creole.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Sergio Saint-Hilaire, Haitian Creole interpreter. Après-midi, on c'est moi-même avec Nadette qui a interprété pour. Et c'est en plaisir pour moi contre encore pour nous faire tout ça nous connaît pour une fois comprendre toute sa captivité. On a traduit pour et que sous besoin entre nos conversations ou apprendre que clic à globe ou et qui en basse tu es quand on peut te la et puis et ou apparaître entré et pour dire toutes sortes de besoins. Sous bien baguez-vous demander bah on pas comprendre ou apprendre la conversation. Et m'a commencé et a traduit pour depuis fini me fini parler là et que traduction par le commencer. C'est mon cas pour commencer lire et puis il n'a déjà pris à cette 45. La continuer même travail là, l'hiposter bouc à région moins encore, l'hiposter bouc à page. Je m'en prends ça dépend de qui le langue que travail et mettez-nous un projet. Et nous comptons pour nous déhavé au et nous joue et passer en très bon après-midi. Et puis non, non jour que n'a fait tout ça possible pour nous faire bon travail pour. Merci beaucoup.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, distinguished guests. Bonsoir, tout le monde, non c'est Nadette, je suis bien. C'est en plaisir pour moi interpréter pour nous entrer à la ici après-midi. Moi vraiment content que nous brancher après-midi. Donc, moi commencé traduire à partir de 7h45. J'ai que Sergio s'occupe d'une là. Donc, si vous payez, si nous y question, nous y doit faire nous connait. Et puis moi espérer que n'a fait passer en bon temps et que n'a pas nos bons services après-midi. Répéter brancher et à tout à l'heure, merci bien.
Merci beaucoup. Our Cabo Verdeano interpreters are Ms. Maria Gomes and Mr. Gerson Tavares. If you could, please give Zoom instructions in Cabo Verdeano and introduce yourselves, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Gerson Tavares. Me and Maria, we will be your interpreters for tonight. Bonne nuit, Spanish, tudo. My name is Gerson. Ah, e junto com Maria, no deve ser, da, calve gano. Ah, se nos crió vi que el reunión llena calve gano, nos pôde baili de bajo. Ahora que, ah, servicio de interpretación activado. Nos vení de bajo, nos sacalten a nuestra sala o ne crán, na que el símbolo de globo. Está la interpretation o interpretación. Y ahora es que pareci lista de língua, nos sacalten aquel que está la Cape Ferdinand Creó o Creó lo calve gano. Obrigado.
Okay, boa tarde. Mi nombre es Maria Gomes, y cabo gana, se vende a perder nada. Una lengua cabo gana, junto con mi colega Gerson, nos está conduta que reunión dios de tarde. Y pa lengua cabo gana, buta calco na tecla de bajo, po bo entra na Zoom, po bo participa na da reunión lì. Y también se creó subo teléfono, está tres puntos na parte superior de botécla. Buta baila y butas code lengua cabo gana, po podi estar directamente y po podi participa nas reunión. Nos esperamos que reunión estas sea aproveitoso y un boa tarde para nosotros.
Obrigado. Our Henske's interpreters are Ms. Anna C. and Ms. Maplesu. If you could, please introduce yourselves and provide Zoom instructions in Cantonese.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Our Mandarin interpreters are Ms. Tina Wang and Mr. Wade Lee. If you could introduce yourselves and please provide Zoom instructions in Mandarin.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. Our Vietnamese interpreters are Ms. Vi Phuang Le and Ms. Du Yan Tru. If Ms. Le is coming from another meeting and will join us, so she'll be able to introduce herself later. Ms. Tru, if you could, please introduce yourself and provide Zoom instructions in Vietnamese.
Good afternoon, I will be a Vietnamese interpreter for tonight. 请各位，如果你们需要语言，欢迎打电话和打电话和选择语言，我们会连续提供给你们。Thank you so much.
Cam On Bun. Our American Sign Language interpreters are Mr. Drew Pitt-Kimany, Ms. Sharon Mendes, and Mr. Simon Martinez. If you could, please introduce yourselves and provide Zoom instructions. Sorry, I was on mute there. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for assisting us this evening. I also want to say thank you to all the Boston Public School staff who are not introducing themselves behind the scenes, who are making it all possible for our meetings. Do you have your, do you have, there you go, mute yourself, thank you. So thank you to the staff behind the scenes, helping us to make this happen, as well as all the technology we are using this evening. So we will now activate the interpretation icon at the bottom of your screen. And I just want to remind everyone, if you could please speak at a slower pace to assist all of our interpreters. Thank you, everyone who signed up for public comment this evening. Sign up for both public comment periods closed today at 4:30 PM. Please make sure that you are signed into Zoom under the same name you used to sign up for public comment. You can use the Zoom tools to rename yourself so that committee staff will be able to recognize you when it comes time to call on you. So thank you in advance for your cooperation. We're really excited and delighted this evening to welcome a new colleague to the Boston School Committee, our new student representative, Zyra Mercer. Woo-hoo. Zyra was elected by her peers on the Boston Student Advisory Council and was officially welcomed by Mayor Janey yesterday. And I want to thank the superintendent and also my colleague, Mr. DeRouge for attending Ms. Mercer's swearing-in yesterday. She is a junior at the Henderson K-12 Inclusion School, where she is captain of the debate team. She's also a member of student government, a leader of vanguards, and that's the Henderson Women's Empowerment Group. She is a member of the Black Student Union and a member of the Henderson Governing Board. She also has a lot of great plans for the future. She is interested in politics and she's also interested in education. And she also loves to cook. She's wonderful, very smart, asks a lot of great questions. I'm really excited to be working with her. We're thrilled to have you with us, Zyra. And I'd like to ask if you could please say a few words about yourself.
Hello, thank you, Chair. So again, my name is Zyra Mercer, and I'm a junior at the Henderson Inclusion School. So I've been going to school within the VPS district since my seventh grade year, coming from a charter school. So it's kind of cool seeing the difference between a charter school and a public school. And honestly, I'm kind of loving the public school more than a charter. And I just want to say hi, like you guys can reach out to me via my email and even text me, obviously during appropriate times when I'm not in school. And yeah, I'm just here to let our students' voices be heard even more clearly than ever was before. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mercer. You can absolutely clap. And if you want to mute yourself, you can. And I'll just take a moment. If any school committee member would like to say anything to Ms. Mercer, please, very briefly, please feel free, Dr. Rivera, go ahead.
Yes, no, just we're thrilled to have you. I saw that you also want to get a PhD, so, you know, looking forward to learning more with you. And yeah, really proud to have you and honored to work with you, so welcome.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes, just want to say welcome. We're glad to have you and look forward to learning with and from you. Take care.
Mr. Vice Chair, O'Neill.
Ms. Mercer, welcome. We're delighted to have you as a fellow member now. And as I said to you privately, but I also want to say publicly, it's especially important that you've been a student at the Henderson, which is a full inclusion school. And as we look to, your voice is going to be so important as you, as you share with us, student perspective on so many matters. But particularly as we look to expand inclusion, do it the right way across our district and have more inclusive opportunities for our students. Having your perspective of having been at school at the Henderson is going to be invaluable. So look forward to working with you. I've already enjoyed our conversations. Thank you for the tips about seasoning for Jamaican cooking. I've already taken you up on that advice you gave me, so look forward to working closely with you and welcome.
Thank you. Any other members? Dr. Casalias, do you want to say anything briefly?
I do. I'm really excited about our future BPS teacher here. Zyra Mercer is going into education and makes me super proud to have her be part of this committee. And she is brilliant, smart, compassionate, and resilient, and just so excited to have her be part of our team here. Welcome.
Thank you. Welcome, welcome, Zyra. We're really, really, really psyched that you're here. So we will now move on to the approval of minutes from our April 7th, 2021 School Committee meeting. And at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented. So moved. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Rivera. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, can you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
Mr. DeRouge.
Yes.
Dr. Rivera. Are you on mute?
I'm sorry, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Thank you. The minutes are approved.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. We will now move on to the superintendent's report, and I present to you our superintendent, Dr. Brenda Casalias.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, members. Today, we had our first in-person Wednesday of the year and our first full week of in-person learning in over a year. I was happy to know that our students and our educators came back refreshed after spring recess, ready to learn and engage one another in their classrooms. While I know it wasn't a vacation week for all of us last week, I do know that many of our employees had some needed time off to enjoy the mostly wonderful spring weather we had this past week. And before sharing some of our highlights from around the district, I'd like to share a data snapshot of our transportation on-time performance, which I'm super proud of our transportation team. BPS yellow bus service expanded significantly this week as BPS returned to five days per week of in-person learning for K-0 to eighth-grade students. Currently, we're running 535 buses with over 2,500 individual bus trips each day for approximately 11,000 BPS students and about 16,000 total riders, including non-BPS students. This represents a 10% increase in the number of daily trips and a 65% increase in the number of daily BPS riders compared to the week prior before April break. A primary metric for success in bus-on-time performance, which is a measure of our success, is the percent of buses that arrive on time to their schools. Our target is to be above 95% on time every day. The team continues to improve throughout the year. And since the last time we shared this data with the committee in mid-March, the team has averaged 96% on-time performance for March and throughout April. So far this week, since reopening for five days per week of in-person learning for K-0 to eighth students on Monday, we were averaging about 92% bus-on-time performance. And our on-time performance has gone up each day from 88% on Monday to 93% yesterday and 94% today. We continue to work to improve our customer service also and support to our families. Our hotline wait time for April averaged 2 minutes and 16 seconds. We strive to keep the wait time under two minutes daily and are working hard to bring that time down. As a reminder for families, BPS implemented new DESI guidance for capacity and distancing requirements on our school buses. We reviewed the guidance, consulted with the Boston Health Commission, and implemented the new recommendations. Just want to remind folks that the new recommendations include up to three elementary students who may be seated per bench on our buses, up to two middle or high school students who may be seated to per bench on our buses. And students and staff continue to be required to wear a mask that covers their nose and mouth the entire time they are on the bus. Windows on buses are to be kept open for ventilation. Buses are disinfected twice daily between the morning and afternoon shifts and again at night. Yesterday was Bus Driver Appreciation Day, and I just want to do again, say thank you to our bus drivers, our bus monitors, and the whole transportation team for their fantastic work this school year to improve our performance and ensure that children get to school safe and on time. I just want to echo Chair Oliver Davila in welcoming our new student representative. I was thrilled to attend the swearing-in ceremony yesterday alongside Mayor Janey, Chair Oliver Davila, Member DeRouge, and Zyra's mom and her mentor, teacher, through our Teacher Core Program, Ms. Raphael. Zyra was elected by her peers on the Boston Student Advisory Council and will serve as the student representative for the rest of this school year and next school year as well. In addition to the clubs and teams that we have mentioned, Zyra is also a member of the District-wide Teacher Cadet Program and is working toward a career in education. Again, welcome, Zyra. I've been so inspired by your leadership already on BSAC, and I look forward to continuing working with you on the school committee as we amplify student voice in our decision-making. Earlier today, the First Circuit Court of Appeals denied the plaintiff's motion an injunction or stay pending its appeal in the court proceedings regarding our exam schools. The court specifically noted that the public interest is best served by permitting defendants to finalize and communicate admissions decisions based on the plan. Today's decision again affirms our temporary admissions process to welcome new students to our three exam schools. Our goal has been to create the most equitable process for admitting a new class of students into our three exam schools amidst the disruption of the COVID-19 pandemic. The admissions process affirmed by the court was designed with the community, including students, school leaders, educators, and civil rights advocates, and will ensure that every student is equitably considered for admissions to our exam schools. I'm so appreciative of the entire team that designed the admissions process and who have helped to describe and support the process throughout the court proceedings. Invitations and non-acceptance letters for all three exam schools were just sent out to all students in the applicant pool, including both BPS students and non-BPS students. Families will receive an admissions letter by email and also by regular mail. If a student has not been notified about their exam school admission status, they can contact our assignment specialist for exam schools at 617-635-9512 or exam@bostonpublicschools.org. All admissions letters include the student's GPA, the student's rank across the city, the student's rank within their zip code, and a fact sheet with detailed information on the rankings. The Exam School Admissions Task Force continues to work on a proposal for long-term exam school admissions policy, which will then be voted on by the school committee. This Saturday, May 1st, from 1:00 to 2:30 PM, the Exam School Admissions Task Force is hosting a student listening session, and all youth are welcome. Virtual meeting information is available at bostonpublicschools.org/calender. As a reminder, the Exam Schools Admissions Task Force meets regularly every Tuesday from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. The meeting agenda, the Zoom link, and public comment signup form are posted on the BPS website 48 hours prior to each meeting. Now to the school visits. On Monday, we began providing five days of in-person learning for students in grades K-0 through 8 and students in grades K through 12, K-0 to 12, in our Special Education Day schools. This was such a great way to return from April break, and I was so happy to visit some of our school communities to meet with students and staff this week. On Monday, I visited the JFK Elementary in Jamaica Plain and the Frederick Middle School in Dorchester. The students at the Frederick were really excited that we were joined by Mayor Janey, who was very impressed with our student tour guides. Yesterday, I also visited the Orchard Gardens K-8 in Roxbury, and I look forward to stopping by many more schools in the days and weeks ahead. The majority of our students learning in person this week had already returned on hybrid schedule, though we are seeing some students in person this week for the first time since last March. At our last meeting, we outlined the health and safety protocols in place across all of our schools and the facility modifications we have had to make to ensure safe physical distancing of three feet in classrooms and six feet during lunch, including erecting outdoor tents. At 78 schools, we put up about 110 tents. I once again have to thank our incredible school leaders, the hard-working educators and school-based staff, and all of our colleagues at Central Office for their combined efforts to make five days of in-person learning a reality for our students this year. Yesterday, Commissioner Riley released guidance to school districts across the Commonwealth to implement five days of in-person learning for high school students by May 17. We've been working closely with our heads of schools and operational leaders to ensure every secondary school is ready to begin providing five-day of in-person learning to students in grades 9 through 12 on May 17. We surveyed families of students in all grades last month about their learning model preference and are using those results in order to inform our planning. I can't wait to see some of our high school students in person every day in just a few weeks. Speaking of our high schoolers, another wonderful thing we announced today was that the Boston Red Sox will host over a dozen graduation ceremonies at Fenway Park later this spring. While the Red Sox extended the offer to all of our schools, many of our schools, particularly our smaller schools, are opting to host celebrations at other locations across the city for a smaller venue. We're so excited to celebrate the Class of 2021 with in-person graduations this year. Over the past year, our students have dealt with so many challenges, pivots, and adaptations to the digital environment and remote learning instruction. Despite so many challenges, they have proven resilient and determined to complete their high school education. I'm so proud of our students and even more grateful that we can acknowledge their commitment to excellence in the public forum. I'd like to again thank the Boston Red Sox and Fenway Park for their partnership to make these in-person ceremonies a reality. Soon, we'll announce additional outdoor locations that will safely host our students and their families on what I hope will be one of the most memorable days of their lives. Congratulations in advance to our Class of 2021. I also, yesterday, held the first of our City Council Budget Hearings with Chief Financial Officer Nate Cooter. And I'd like to start by thanking Mayor Janey and our City Council for their continued commitment to Boston Public Schools' $100 million three-year investment in our strategic plan. This funding is extremely important to creating equitable and excellent schools across every neighborhood. At the hearing, we also announced that a commission charged with reviewing and providing input into how we equitably and sustainably invest our federal relief funding will be conducted that will help us to look at our nearly $400 million that we'll have over the next few years. This commission of mostly external partners was established to expand the tent and provide an opportunity for all of Boston to weigh in on our planning. However, much of our planning will also be done internally with our educators, our school leaders, our parents, and students as we co-design the funding opportunities. We'll have a full plan from our Community Engagement Office on our new website once the state has finalized their guidance to us. And those meetings will be updated to reflect the broader engagement we plan to tend to do with our key stakeholders who are closest to the classroom, our educators, our parents, our students, and our school leaders. These commission members who are external to the organization were selected based on their work with BPS students and schools, their relationship with key BPS stakeholders, and their knowledge of our district's strategic priorities. Members are listed on the Return, Recover, Reimagine Commission webpage, available at bostonpublicschools.org/federalrelieffunds21. The commission will advise me and the district on key focus areas for these new investments with a commitment to allocating the funding in an equitable and sustainable manner. The commission will have just five meetings, twice monthly over the next two months, with the final meeting to be held on July 1st, during which the plan will be presented and posted for a formal 30-day public review and comment period. We'll be thinking about how we can transform the educational experience to come back not as a better version of the district we were, but as a reimagined BPS, one that our students deserve and in which our students will thrive. We need to change minds and change our policies and then resource our work. We cannot simply add resources and expect different results. As we reimagine our district and our community, we are taking with us the lessons that we have learned over the past year to become a school district where every school in every neighborhood and every part of the city is equipped to help every student unlock their unlimited potential. Couple of highlights of some upcoming events. This Friday, April 30th, is our annual LGBTQ+ Student Summit. All middle and high school LGBTQ+ and questioning students are invited to join us for the virtual event. There will be workshops, student discussions, and a special drag performance by special guest Neon Calypso. Students can register for the event at tinyurl.com/lgbtqussummit2021. I want to thank our LGBTQ+ Student Support Manager DJ Rock for all they have done this year to provide a safe place for our LGBTQ youth. We have many events coming in the days and weeks to celebrate the cultural diversity of our community. A core value that guides our work is equity, and BPS is committed to celebrating the rich cultural traditions of our students, staff, and families, and ensuring safe, healthy, and welcoming schools. I can't wait to celebrate Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month tomorrow with our virtual kickoff event. This Saturday evening, May 1st, at 7:30 p.m., we're also hosting a virtual Ramadan F-dar or dinner. The event will feature presentations by staff and community members, and the winners of our Ramadan art contest will be revealed. In addition, all next week, we're celebrating Virtual Immigrant Pride Week with a day of, week of action from May 3rd to May 7th, a week of online activities held to support immigrant and undocumented students and their families. This is coordinated by our BPS Office of English Language Learners. An Immigrant Pride Week is an opportunity to bring attention to our BPS educators and send a message to students, staff, and families that are immigrant and undocumented students and families are welcomed, supported, and loved in our schools. Immigrant Pride Week also aims to increase the community's awareness and understanding of immigrant and undocumented student and family experiences. Events include a workshop on Boston's immigration history, a panel discussion of the immigrant experience, and much more. Please visit bostonpublicschools.org/bps-immigrant-pride for more information and resources. And throughout May, we'll also be celebrating Haitian Heritage Month with multiple events hosted by our Office of English Learners. Much more information about all of these celebrations, including registration and meeting links, is included in our weekly update newsletter and always available at bostonpublicschools.org/weeklyupdate. Finally, the nomination period for the 2021 Educator of the Year Award closes this Friday, April 30th. The Educator of the Year Award is a collaboration between BPS, the Boston Teachers Union, and the City of Boston. It annually recognizes the exemplary educators who go above and beyond to impact the lives of Boston Public School students. We invite all members of the BPS community, teachers, administrators, students, families, and community members and partners to nominate exceptional educators to honor their work and dedication to their school communities. To nominate an educator, and it will be hard this year because there are so many, go to bostonpublicschools.org/EOY. Can't wait to see all of the wonderful educators that we nominate this year and hear all of the great stories that are going on in our schools. And with that, it's my superintendent's report for this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent. Wow, that is a lot of really great stuff. Thank you for sharing. I will now open it up to the committee for questions and discussion. And I'd like to remind everyone of our norms of, please keep your questions to five minutes and staff response as well. And if you have more questions, we can do a second round. Usually, we would start with our student, but we're going to give her a little break tonight as she gets used to how this all rolls. So I'm going to start with Mr. DeRougeau.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Superintendent, I have a lot of questions and concerns about this commission that you announced with respect to the federal funds coming into the district. And first, just a constructive communication here that, you know, as a school committee member, I raised the specificity of this issue at one of our hearings. I then learned about the commission through the press release. I actually had, I was, I had a communication with some families that are connected or doing advocacy for the school. And one of them pointed out the commission, and I says, oh, no, I don't think there's a commission. I haven't heard anything about it. We haven't discussed it at all at school committee other than raising the concerns. So please, if going forward, you know, if I raise an issue as a school committee member in, you know, in this forum, and also raise it with you privately as well, that something so, this is so significant. This is really, you know, as we know, this is the biggest investment in BPS since the New Deal. I don't know what was it compared to, but this is significant. We need to get off on the right foot. So that's the first kind of just constructive comment. The other piece is, is just that I don't think we got on the right foot with respect to announcing this commission. You know, some real concerns of mine, one is that, in this, you know, again, trying to be constructive here, that we have a commission here that, we're, you know, we're leading with an elite group of folks. And a lot of these folks are my friends, people that I either, you know, work with or have relationships with. But it's, it's heavy on professional advocates. It's heavy on theorists. Why don't we lead with families? Why don't we lead with children? Why don't we lead with educators? You know, we can, we've done these processes before. We have, we have experience here in the city of Boston 10 years ago with, or more with the ARRA funding. We have direct experience, and we know that every single neighborhood, if I, if I go to families in Jamaica Plain, if I go to families in East Boston, they know every inch of every building of their schools. And they believe that they are their schools, and I believe that they are their schools. They can tell you how this money should be spent, how it should be invested. They can tell you what their kids need. The educators can tell you, you know, with great specificity what the needs are. Why don't we lead with that? And I don't think it's enough to say that the state has to make their guidelines. You know, we're the city of Boston. We're the largest district in the Commonwealth in New England. We should come forward and say, this is how we're starting our process. We're, we talk about equity, but we need, we're going to start with families. We're going to start with children. We're going to start with educators. We're not going to start with a professional commission, which I honestly don't, I still don't understand what the role of that commission is. So a lot there, but I'll leave that there.
Thank you for that feedback. We'll be sure to get the communications to you sooner next time.
Thank you. Do you have any response with respect to the process? So a big thing here is that we need details, right? Can you explain why you started with this process? Why you selected folks that are directly connected to us? Can you explain that?
Yeah, so Monica Roberts and her team will put together the parent and community process as well as school leaders. As soon as we have more details for the engagement process there, as well as our students and B-SAC, it will run a lot like I did the strategic plan process, as well as the process that we used for our reopening. I think that we had to announce our external partners to get on their calendars. And we have already structures in place for involving our parents. We have our SPEDPAC meetings. We have our D-LAC meetings, our ELL Task Force, our OAG Task Force. We have our Equity Roundtables at schools where school leaders will be working with their communities around the funding. We just don't yet know how much that is or the guardrails around how we will put together the options. And so we would like to have some more guidance from the state before we release the guardrails and specifics to parents and school leaders so that they know what they're working with when they actually have their meetings. We have very established processes of parent councils at school buildings and Equity Roundtables, both at the district and school level, for their engagement, not to mention the public processes that we'll have. One thing that is good for everyone to know in terms of this external stakeholder group to get on their calendars and have them placeholds right away. At each of the meetings, we will have those viewable by the public as well as have time for public comment after each meeting so that the public will also be able to provide additional comment into it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, again, I don't understand why, why we're able to lead with that and not with a community-run process. But, you know, I'll just ask, just going forward, if you can just have clear, you know, each meeting, you know, when are you going to deliver this plan? When are we going to, I think we should have this as a standing item. It's, it's the biggest thing we're going to deal with, I think. So I'll leave it there. I know my time is up. Sorry.
I think it's also important to note that my, I know that you're new to the committee, but when I first came to the district, this is a huge value of mine is community engagement and cultivating trust. It's a commitment that we have. I visited 125 schools in 100 days, had over 102 meetings with two, over 2,000 people giving input into the strategic plan. And we'll be using a lot of that information as well in terms of the guidance that we give to school leaders and, and we, as we develop this plan. And every time we did the same thing with our reopening plans, we had so many meetings with our public and our community. So I just want you to know that it is a strong value of mine. It may not be clear yet to the public what our community-based plan is, but it will be clear. And I could have led with that, but we do have structures in place for getting feedback from our parents, our students, and our community. And we'll be deploying those with our Department of Family and Community Engagement, and we'll have that information out shortly.
Great. Thank you, Mr. DeRougeau. And yeah, I think great points, and it's a both and, right? So we will also bring forth, the superintendent will bring the plan for families, students, parents, stakeholders, et cetera, and with a timeline. So thank you. Dr. Rivera?
Yes, so I just want to again thank all the incredible hard work of the teachers and the staff, the bus drivers that have gotten our kids back into, for some of our kids, right back five days a week. My son is already a changed boy, just being back. So he's just smiling. And so I'm really, really grateful that also, I know this is happening in all the schools where there's extra social-emotional learning happening and just, you know, playing games, you know, just really, you know, activities for the young people to get to know each other and relationship building is truly special. So just want to again acknowledge that, that hard work, and I'm very grateful as a parent. My two questions are, number one, Superintendent, if you could give a little, or one of your staff, a report on how we're doing with the pool testing. This has been a consistent concern and question as well that I've raised around the low participation levels there. So wondering how we're doing with increasing that student participation in pool testing. And second, if, if you could give an update on summer learning and what are some of the plans there in terms of, again, you know, school-based partners and, and again, some of the safety protocols around that work. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. So with pool testing, we still continue to struggle with families choosing to do consent. I don't have the exact numbers, but we can get that for you on, if there have been increases and by which schools. And so we'll continue to work on the pool testing. As for summer learning, we plan on doing an announcement next week on summer learning so that families know what we are proposing for the summer school. Again, it'll be about 50 schools that will do extended-year opportunities for our students. We will be partnering again with Boston After School and Beyond on enrichment activities. We have youth jobs. We'll be working with this city on. We have our normal extended year or ESY that we do with special education students. We also will have credit recovery for any high school students that need to do additional credit recovery for graduation or to make up an incomplete. And so those are the major pieces that we'll be doing during the school year. We anticipate somewhere around 27,000, 30,000 students will be participating in one of those programs that I've listed. We have a website as well called Summer Stuff that you can go to as well on our Boston Public Schools website. And you can get information there about all of And you can get information there about all of the programs that are available this summer. And we plan on doing a, a big launch next week.
Thank you, just real quick, if I could go back to, and I, I don't have another question after this, but when the schools are also keeping the data dashboard around the COVID, you know, the COVID dashboard, are you, is that going to include the testing to the, excuse me, the, the pool testing as well? I'm just curious how, like whether that dashboard will also show if there's been an increase in a particular school with regards to the pool testing.
Well, we have about, I'm, I'm getting a text from my chief of staff who said that we have 6,900 consents on file right now. And that's up from about 2,900 that we had in early March. So that's a pretty significant increase in the consents. But of course, we have more students coming to school as well. We don't have this on our website, but I can bring that back to the team.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera, Ms. Robinson.
Yes, thank you for your updates, I have a couple of questions. In terms of the number of students that have returned today, how is that run against what you were expecting to come back, given what parents had said before the vacation week?
So we're at about 55% of what we were expecting of students coming back. So we still are seeing some attendance issues with our students. Of course, they're attending in the remote environment, so we still see our students attending in the remote environment. We have been running to ground though this week, some teachers are still marking their children in the, in, in remote present, but they're actually in person and they're taking their attendance at the end of the day. And so we're, we're trying to reconcile with teachers because there's different ways to mark the students present, either in present and remote or present in person or absent in remote or absent in person. And so, you know, just getting those codes and making sure that the teachers have the right information on how to mark their, their students. But we, we think we're getting to the bottom of that, so that we can make sure we have an accurate accounting.
Great. With regard to summer, will there be more directed communication between teachers and parents with regard to helping families make the best selection for their child's needs over the summer, given some of the academic concerns or other concerns that teachers may have also been witnessing?
Yes, so we've been asking our school leaders and teachers to work with our students, so that there's a plan for every student around their summer learning and their summer engagement. It's even marking it in the panorama software system is if you just are going to be at grandma's house this summer and you're not going to engage in our programs at all. So we're trying to get an accounting from all of our students and there'll be outreach from the teachers and from, from our school leaders.
Great. Thirdly, a, a little bit in, in what Mr. DeRouge was talking about with regard to the commission. I've also heard from some families concerned about just utilizing the citywide parent council, for example, as them, you know, the parent member to come to the commission or just using BSAC, when there are wider varieties of students groups, as well as parent groups. And so if not the commission, is there an opportunity for expanded activity that will engage families and how will particularly newer parent groups or other student groups become aware of how they interact, have their voices heard, give, give ideas? People are concerned that public comment is just that, it's not a dialogue. So the question is, you know, how through this process can we begin to answer some of the concerns that broader community have in terms of being able to feel fully engaged?
Yeah, so there's, there are so many ways that folks can be engaged. And so I want to make sure that everyone understands that there will be community-wide meetings for everybody to be engaged. They're just not announced yet because we can't go out there and tell everybody what we're doing when we don't have guidance from the state. So I'm just trying to be really clear with the public that, you know, we have to know from the state how they are going to restrict or give us guidance about what that application process needs to be, so that we are, when we go out, we're not backtracking, right? And so with our parents and our community members, we will definitely have multiple community meetings. There will be equity roundtable meetings at the school level and parent council meetings. There will be meetings that we will have at the district-wide equity roundtable. So there will be plenty of opportunities, there will be a hearing that I will have with the school committee, so that you all can hear, hear it formally, and then I will have a public review and comment period, a 30-day public review and comment period, where we will have the plan up and translated, just like we did for our reopening plan. And so that the public can take sections and provide input and feedback. And as those come in, we can make revisions and bring a final plan for the school committee somewhere around the end of July.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Coleman.
Yes, once again, thank you superintendent, you have a, your report captures the breadth of issues that we have to deal with and the complexity and the fact that you're able to summarize it in such an effective way. It speaks well to the growing coherence of the work done by the districts. I really appreciate how that represents the, your ability to kind of caption information, bring it forward and, and it's encouraging. I do share my colleagues' questions about the commission and so I'm very happy to hear you talk about a broader community-based approach that follows the values we're, we're talking about in terms of amplifying family and student voice. And looking forward to the reports, the process that really demonstrate how we've done that and that we're not just turning, that the commission may have a function in the process, but there are other ways we're also collecting information before a final decision is made. And then I just want to, and I think this is both a question, both to you, Dr. Casellius and, and chairperson, now the Dalai, my assumption is that because this is a budgetary item and that as a school committee, those are two biggest responsibilities is approval of investments, financial investments, and also the destruction and supervision. The superintendent, I'm assuming that there's going to be a report that's come to us that will be, that would be something we will vote on prior to its implementation. And that if that is, if that assumption's correct, which I hope it is, if it's not, I think that's area of discussion. If it is correct, then I would want to have as part of that report, the kind of the fidelity check on, on our values of amplifying student voices, engaged parents, and also the role, and, and some explicit conversation about the, how the commission operates in a relationship to those voices. But again, incredible wide breadth of work, very impressive growing coherence, which makes me very excited. And I just want to affirm that before decisions made about this massive investment, we will have a report that will have considered time to review and, and respond to.
Absolutely.
Yes, Dr. Coleman, we will have something to review and we will vote on it as the school committee. Ms. Mercer?
So my question is, do you have an example of the model that's going to be used for the high school full in person? And also do you have a timeline on that?
We do not have a model for high school full in person just yet. It's going to be, the high school, school leaders are working on their plans right now for each high school. And the high schools may look different depending on the students that they serve. And the return is May 17th for five days. And of course, students and families will still be able to opt up to full remote.
Thank you, Vice Chair, O'Neill.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Superintendent, thank you for your presentation. Two comments, one about high school and following up on, on Ms. Mercer's comment. You know, I've had folks say to me, well, schools have reopened, can we reopen high schools sooner than May 18th? Could you just talk for a minute about some of the challenges that are a bit more unique to high schools versus, you know, our elementary schools or our K to eight schools and, and some of the work that's being done to get ready for the high schools to reopen?
Yeah, so our high school heads of schools need to reschedule students. It also can be quite challenging that in our schools that have six through 12 or seven through 12, where they're on a different schedule now because they're already coming five days a week. So, and then the, the high school students will be coming later and are currently on two days a week. So they have to again do all of that rescheduling of students. Another challenge for them is the lunch and figuring out how to do lunch for such large amounts of students at one time, when teachers get a duty-free lunch. You know, typically in a high school, you might have upwards of 100 students having lunch at one time. And some of our much larger high schools, they might be serving 300 students at lunch at one time. So they've got to figure out how they'll fit in the time for them to do that safely, because the requirement is three feet within the classroom, but six feet outside the classroom. And then the other real challenge for us is just flat-out capacity with high schools having a larger class size than many of our elementary schools and trying to fit them in. And so just taking that survey data that, that we got, realizing how many students we will actually have that want to come to five day and then fitting them into their different classroom spaces within the school. So those are their biggest challenges. And I think, you know, just in terms of high school students, I think as you get closer and closer to the end of school, especially for our seniors, because they end school earlier than the June 18th. You know, is it worth it, you know, to come back to school at the later date? We think so, because they have to take their AP tests, you know, they still have the SAT in school tests that they need to take, their MCAS tests. So there's a number of exams that our students have to sit for. And so coming to school will also allow for that to happen.
And I think some students are clearly anxious to get back and, and miss it, right? If you're a senior, you know, if this is your last time in the school, we'll be interested to, to see. Hopefully they will attend. Is there any anecdotal evidence? I know we're only back three days, but obviously we've been concerned about the sense of isolation of our students, the social emotional health of our students, our teachers and our behavioral health specialists being on extra alert as our students adapt to being back in the classroom. Any sense of that from you?
Yeah, Mr. O'Neill, we've been on extra alert all year with our students' mental health and support. The, the team has been checking in with our high school students regularly. This is another piece of checking in with them when they come to make sure everybody's feeling reconnected and a part of the community. Another big piece is even though we're in person, we want to make sure that our remote friends are feeling still part of the community. This is especially true of our elementary students, because they, their friends are not in the Zoom any longer, but in person. And that takes an adjustment period as well. And so we're wanting to make sure we still connect with our friends, like I'll go visit the classrooms and I make sure I say hello to the friends who are still on Zoom and in, at home and, and making sure they still feel connected to the community.
That's great, and I appreciate that sensitivity to that group, because right, you, you can feel left out, right? If you're used to seeing students on Zoom, now all of a sudden they're in the classroom and you're not. It can even add to the sense of isolation, so. And, and lastly, with regards to, you, you call it a commission, I think of it in terms of working group, because it's a superintendent's group. And, you know, my understanding of their charges, they are not deciding how we are spending this money as, as Dean, Dr. Coleman points out, that's the school committee's purview. We make the ultimate decision on spending, so this is an advisory group to advise you on priorities, a way to think about spending, particularly as, as you had on the screen about return, recover and reimagine. Advice and, and broad thinking about how to reimagine from what we have learned from this pandemic and how to reimagine our education going forward could be very helpful. I do appreciate that, yeah, when I saw the list, it looked like you had multiple parents on there, you have multiple students, you have multiple teachers, including representatives from the BTU and multiple school leaders, along with external partners. But I just want to make sure the charge is very clear that they are advising you, not that they are the decision makers on how we're going to spend that money. And, and I do know, you know, there is no, I appreciate you putting this together, because there is no blueprint on this. We've never, we've never had this level of funding this fast, even in previous spending by the federal government, you know, on recovery, that type of thing. We never had a sense of extra money and, and how should we approach the spending? So there is no blueprint for this. And I, and I do know nationally, districts are looking at combinations of these working groups that you have of town, holding town halls, which it sounds like you're going to have a number of those, and even surveys of districts, a kind of surveys of families. And it sounds like you're going to be incorporating all three, so. Obviously, there were some bumps rolling this out, but there always is, particularly when you're trying to create a new blueprint. And look forward to working with you on this, but I'll be interested and see how you set up the charge for this group.
Yeah, the, the charge for the group is going to be responding to the drafts that we put together at, in the district level and then providing input, but everybody is a valued voice in the community. You know, we're going to have to sustain the effort, so it's going to be important for our external partners and stakeholders to also have a voice at the table. And so this is a, this is their opportunity and I wanted to get the dates on their calendars. And so because we have such a close relationship already with our parents and our students and ways to access them much, much easier, I needed to get this information out for holding the dates for, for our external group.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any further questions? Okay. I also just wanted to thank all of the staff who are back with our students and just echo Dr. Rivera's sentiments. Seeing happy, happy students in my own home and just the change within my own daughter and just, she's so excited to go to school, she's, she's up, can't wait. I used to, I used to have to drag her out of bed, she's so excited and students in her class have, are, are back together again. They have a group called SASSO, which is the Stuffed Animal Socialization Organization. And they're very excited to all be back and doing that. And they're also doing it via Zoom with their Zoom peers, so creating that connection as the vice chair was talking about. So I just want to thank everybody, thank you superintendent and all the staff, because I know it's, it's been a lot of stops and starts, things beyond our control, and so it's just great that we're, you know, making that happen. And I really just want to say I'm glad to hear about the plan for every student for the summer, that will be really important. You know, it's already May, so people really need to have their plan. So I think if teachers are talking to families right now to let them know what are the opportunities and that they're both virtual opportunities and in-person opportunities, because every student should have a, a plan, as you said. And I really loved seeing all of the diverse celebrations. I have to say, I'm proud to be in a district where we just have such an array of things that we're talking about and honoring people's, you know, ethnicity, race, cultural heritage, their, their linguistic assets, just really great, so thank you for that. And the GL, LGBTQ piece too, super important. And the, the last thing I just wanted to say in terms of the commission piece is that I, I just want to apologize to all of my colleagues, because I, you know, the fact that you've heard about this through a press release, I apologize for that in terms of being the chair of the school committee and just will do a better job to communicate some of the larger things. I think we've I think we've been in so many meetings where it's been discussed. And so I apologize if it wasn't clear what was happening with that working group slash commission. And please do know that, you know, I do take really seriously, the vice chair does, and so does the superintendent, the community engagement aspect, and that is not something that is forgotten. It's a both and. And so to the best of my ability, I'll make sure that everybody is aware ahead of time. So thank you again. So if there is no further discussion, I would like to entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report.
Madam Chair, do you mind? I'm sorry, I see the follow up on your comment there. And I appreciate your as Chair of our committee, you know, taking some responsibility there. But my comment is very specifically directed at the superintendent and her issue with us.
Yes.
It was very specific as I raised it in specificity in one of these hearings. So that's why I expected that response before I saw it in the press release. So, but thank you.
Yes, no, and thank you for that. I just wanted to play, take my part, you know, for the future to make sure, for whenever I can, to make sure to let all of you know, you know, as the person that that is directly speaking with the superintendent on a consistent basis. But thank you. And thank you, everybody, for your comments. And we all are learning as we go, right? So thank you very much. So if there's no further discussion, I would like to entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, can you please call the room?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. DeRougeau?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Thank you. The report is approved unanimously.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Sullivan. And before we move on to public comment this evening, we're going to be receiving two reports so that the committee can actually take action on these matters later this evening. First, I would like to invite Jeremiah Hassan, the Director of Labor Relations, to present a tentative memorandum of agreement between the Boston School Committee and the Boston Teachers Union. So I will turn it over to you, Mr. Hassan.
Is Mr. Hassan muted?
I apologize for that. Good evening, Chair Person, Superintendent and Committee members. I'm happy to be here tonight to give you a brief overview and request your support on a recent tentative agreement between the Boston Public Schools and the Boston Teachers Union that would bring the family liaison position into the paraprofessionals unit of the BTU. The family liaison position was created prior to the current school year as a school-based position at our transformational schools and schools with high EL populations to improve family and student engagement and build trust between our families and school staff. Due to the positive impact of the position, the district has committed to expand the position to school, to all schools for the upcoming school year. In November, the Boston Teachers Union filed a charge at the Department of Labor Relations seeking to bring the family liaison position into the paraprofessionals union. As part of the DLR case, parties engaged in mediation, which led to further negotiations and ultimately the tentative agreement. The highlights of this agreement the highlights of this agreement include the school leaders retaining the right to hire preferred candidates regardless of a candidate's seniority or prior membership in the union. Family liaisons will work an extended work year of two hundred and twenty-three days as opposed to the regular school year of a hundred and eighty-three days. They'll also work flexible work schedules that allows them to work summers and if necessary, on weekends or traditional school or beyond traditional school hours. And finally, the family liaisons will remain on the current salary scale. So bringing them into the unit will not negatively impact the current school budget. We are confident that this agreement is a fair and equitable deal and it serves the interest of all parties involved. Specifically, the district maintains the hiring autonomy and scheduling flexibility so that we can hire the best candidates to meet our schools' needs and that they can work schedules that best serve our families' needs. Family liaisons gain union protections and collective bargaining rights, which make these positions more attractive and should help the district retain retain good employees. And the Boston Teachers Union increases its membership. Again, we think that this is a fair and equitable agreement. And we request that the committee vote in favor of it. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. And Mr. O'Neal, thank you for pointing out my new button was still on. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Hassan. I will now open it up to questions and discussion from the committee. And you can either raise your hand in virtually or write it in the chat box. And please, I remind everybody you have five minutes, so if you have any questions. Okay. So thank you again, Mr. Hassan. The committee looks forward to taking action on this request later this evening.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work. Our next report is an update on the school committee's goals and values. In an effort to strengthen our focus on student outcomes, the committee has been working since last December to identify a set of five goals and five values to guide our work. The goals represent what students should know and be able to do. They are student outcomes. The values represent the non-negotiable community values that must be honored while we pursue the goals. They are adult inputs. It's worth repeating that the goals and values are taken directly from the strategic plan. They do not replace the strategic plan. The district will continue to track the fifty-five measures in the strategic plan. This is really about holding ourselves accountable for student outcomes and using the data to change course when necessary. Thank you, Ms. Hogan. The committee has presented versions of this document at previous meetings. So tonight, I would like to focus on the updates that we've made in response to stakeholder feedback. The committee really wanted this to be a community document. I want to thank the many stakeholders who took the time to share their feedback on this document, including but not limited to the yellow task force, sped pack, beam, Black Student Achievement Network and the Opportunity Achievement Gaps Task Force, as well as all of the folks that came out to our seven public sessions, community and students, adults and students, parents, et cetera, and partners. This document is stronger because of all of you. It is not a perfect document, but it is a first step. It's a step we need to take to become a high-performing school district. So I'm going to just walk us through the key changes. In the preamble, we added language reaffirming that closing opportunity and achievement gaps is our top priority. We also added information about student demographics to show clearly who we serve when we talk about the Boston Public Schools. We heard that language of guardrails could potentially be inaccessible to some communities. We have edited the language to rename the document "School Committee Goals and Values." There was a request from a number of stakeholders to place specific focus on Black student achievement. We have added targets for Black student outcomes under each of the five goals. We received feedback that the metric for English learners was narrowly focused on English proficiency. To reaffirm our commitment to multiple measures for EL student achievement, we added a student outcome target under each of the five goals for English learners. We heard concerns that focusing on only only on inclusive settings for students with special needs could potentially lead to dumping of students with disabilities into general education. For the achievement goal for students with disabilities, we modified it as follows. Students with disabilities will thrive and grow in appropriate settings, which include but are not limited to inclusive settings. We also changed the measure for that goal to include the student growth percentile on the MCAS ELA and mathematics assessment of fifty or higher. We specifically specifically called out English language learners with disabilities and economically disadvantaged students and added targets for them under each of the five goals. Those are the key changes. We also heard feedback from the chairs of the OEG Task Force suggesting that we add a line for each goal clearly measuring the gaps. This is important feedback and we want to get it right. So we're going to ask the OEG Task Force to discuss this further and make recommendations on how best to capture that data. I want to thank Dr. Grantson, Chief Equity and Strategy Officer, and also Ms. Hogan, Senior Executive Director, for the Office of Data and Accountability, as well as the Vice Chair, O'Neal, for the many meetings that we all attended together. We've had, we had several multiple meetings with task forces and external groups. And I want to thank all of the school committee members for the sessions that they did as well. And so I will now turn it over to Dr. Grantson and Ms. Hogan, who will review the goals and metrics in more detail.
Great. Thank you, Chair. And good evening, everyone. We have been intentional in partnering with the school committee to ensure that the goals and values document is aligned with the commitments, priorities, and aligned progress measures outlined in the strategic vision imagined BPS twenty twenty-five. Here you'll see using the key in orange where each commitment shows up in the proposed goals. The Chair and Vice Chair have been clear that these guiding documents are not separate and that the goals and values are not meant to supplant but enhance the work of our strategic vision. Next slide. The non-negotiable community values that we believe are critical to achieving the goals are outlined on this slide. While the school committee proposed goals have a laser focus on student outcomes, of the many inputs and activities outlined in the BPS strategic plan, many are emphasized in these values. And again, using the icons, you can see the alignment with the strategic plan. My colleague, Ms. Hogan, will discuss this in greater detail. But each of the measures associated with the aligned commitments and priorities will serve as the mechanism for measuring the district's progress toward living these values. With that, I'll turn it to Monica Hogan.
Thank you, Dr. Grantson. So this slide adjusts, outlines the adjustments made to the goals themselves. As the Chair mentioned, each of the five goals now has a target set for each major student group in addition to all students. Targets will be set for the four major race groups, Asian, Black, Latinx, and white students, as well as English learners, students with disabilities, English learners with disabilities, and economically disadvantaged students. This affirms our commitment to multiple measures for all student groups. As we know that one measure is not sufficient to capture everything that is happening. The highlighted language below in the table shows the specific language that has changed. So for goal three, the language of inclusive environments was changed to appropriate settings, which include but are not limited to inclusive settings, as well as adding a measure for growth on the math MCAS assessment. Goal four was also adjusted to include students in grades three through eight instead of just grade eight. This slide shows the baseline data for each goal as well as the one-year, three-year, and five-year targets. The this this slide only shows for all students and will show the student group targets on the next slides. Targets were set incrementally based on the baseline with equal increments for each group. Because most of the baseline data is from twenty nineteen and pre-COVID, we do not yet have a clear understanding of how COVID will impact the baseline. So we will revisit these targets and revise if necessary next year, given changes to the baseline and differentiated targets for student groups. For goal one around early literacy, we do not yet have baseline data to inform target setting due to assessment changes in COVID nineteen. We will revisit these goals for goal one in particular following assessment administration this year. You'll see in the table that there is a row for each student group where we will fill in the targets. The following slides all look very similar. So I will give a brief overview on each slide, then pause for a moment for you to view the data. For goal two, this goal is focused on English learners. You again see the table with the major student groups listed. Because this goal is focused on English learners, the groups within the table are a further disaggregation of the English learner group. So for instance, the English learners who are identified as economically disadvantaged have a higher percentage of students achieving a growth percentile of fifty or higher on the access assessment than all of our English learners. Goal three is focused on students with disabilities. And as we mentioned, now has targets for both ELA and math. So this slide shows the targets for ELA. Similar to the previous goal, this slide further disaggregates the students with disabilities group by race, English learners, and economically disadvantaged students. This is the same goal, but the math portion of goal three. So it is again further disaggregated within the students with disabilities group. Goal four is focused on math, science, and literacy as measured by the ELA math and science MCAS for grades three through eight. And this slide shows the average skilled score for ELA and the associated targets. As a reminder, an average skilled score of five hundred or higher indicates that on average, students are performing at or above the meeting expectations threshold. This is the math measure for goal four. One thing to note is that we do see slightly lower performance for the all-students group in math than we do in ELA. And this is the science measure for goal four. The science MCAS is only administered in grades five and eight. We see the lowest performance in science with notably no student groups achieving an average skilled score of five hundred or higher in the twenty nineteen MCAS. Goal five looks at the percentage of graduates, meeting the citywide definition. Goal Five looks at the percentage of graduates, meeting the citywide definition of college career and life readiness. That definition includes attendance of ninety-four percent or higher, completion of mass core, a GPA of two point seven or higher, enrollment in advanced coursework, and anywhere, anytime learning, which includes things like internships. There was also some language adjustments made to the values. In particular, as the Chair noted, changing the word guardrails to values. This slide shows the aligned commitment from the strategic plan, as well as the yellow highlights showing the adjusted language within the values. In particular, language was added around honoring student and family voice and decision-making, engagement with key partners in decision-making to ensure that we are meeting the needs of all students, ensuring students with disabilities are educated in appropriate settings, which include but are not limited to inclusive settings, ensuring that English learners have access to high-quality curriculum and instruction across content areas that will allow them to reach their full potential and cultivate their native language, and providing professional learning opportunities to explicitly address these areas. Additionally, we have identified aligned progress measures from the strategic plan for each value. This slide includes a sample of those aligned measures from the strategic plan. For example, for community partnerships, the aligned commitment from the strategic plan is Commitment Six, Activate Partnerships. One sample measure is the percentage of students participating in summer learning programs. And I will now pass it back to you, Madam Chair, to talk about next steps.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hogan. So in terms of looking at the next steps, if the committee approves the final goals and values this evening, we will then work with our facilitator from the Council of Great City Schools, A.J. Crabbell, which I'll remind everyone, the Vice Chair is the Chair of the Board of the Council of Great City Schools, and therefore, we are able to receive A.J.'s services in kind, which is huge. So what we will be working on with him is to create a monitoring calendar and create a monitoring report template. Then we will align the committee's work with the goals and values. We will redesign our agendas. We'll revise the committee's operating procedures and revise committee policy. The committee will monitor the district's progress on the goals. Where we see areas of concern, we'll be asking the superintendent and her team to identify new strategies to address those concerns, and the data will drive the strategies. I want to be clear that the committee sees this as a living, breathing document. And as we move into the next phase of this work, if the committee finds areas that are not working or that need to be adjusted, we will make those adjustments. Just as the committee is committed to accelerating student growth, we are also committed to growing and learning as a body. So again, I want to thank all the school committee members for the sessions. I want to thank the public who attended the sessions, the parents, stakeholders, students, family members. I want to thank all of the task forces, sped pack. Because of you, our document is stronger. They were really great conversations. Want to again thank the Vice Chair and thank Dr. Grantson and Ms. Hogan for their tireless work. And that is the update. So I will now open it up to the committee for questions or comments, feedback. And I just would like to remind everyone again of the five-minute rule. If you have more than five minutes worth of questions, we can come back to you. So if you could please either raise your hand in your Zoom box or write it in the chat, that will be great.
Dr. Coleman?
I wasn't eager to go first, but I will. One, thank you. I appreciate all the work that we've done, but also as a district has worked very hard to incorporate feedback and for the wide variety of community support that be given in terms of attention to this, the development of what I think is a very powerful way to figure out the district in terms of becoming really focused on outcomes and using that to drive our behavior and changes. I wanted, I'm prepared completely to vote for this proposal as it stands, but I have a couple of comments maybe moving forward. As many of you know, I've been, I've been having a lot of ambivalence about this statement about closing achievement and opportunity gaps as, as, as the guiding principle for the district, mostly because from where I sit in this ecology, there's so many things that our children come to us with that are part of the barriers until the city council eliminate, helps us eliminate childhood poverty in all our homes in our school, reduce the childhood poverty rate to about five percent, increase family incomes substantively across all ethnic groups. I think that we have challenges that I'm ambivalent about creating a standard that we may not have the power and ability to achieve. So I've been very ambivalent about that. I want to say that our conversation in the Opportunity Achievement Gap Task Force the other day was incredibly enlightening for me and encouraging for me. And I want to share just briefly a couple of the comments that were made there that I think give us a great way forward. As we all know, there's a concern that the very phrase of opportunity achievement gap can lead to some essentially racist comparisons that are very difficult to understand how if we're moving towards becoming an anti-racist organization, how do we, how do we define these gaps? And what are, what are we really saying? Is it realistic that all kids are going to reperform at the same level? I will never do math as well as my wife or my children. I just never will. That gap will always be there. It doesn't mean I can't acquire a level competency in math that has been able to be successful in a quantitative oriented field. So I think the, I think we have to think about language that helps us incorporate those real human differences in motivation, et cetera, while still holding us to a high bar. So the question that was raised in the meeting yesterday that I want to lift up for us to consider, and yes, Monica, this means more difficult work for you, is starting to think of what is our criterion reference? What is the standard at which we think unless all our kids get over, we're not doing well enough? And that measuring the gaps by the difference between that criterion and performance by the subgroups we've identified may be a healthier, more healthier and more useful set of data for us to work, work with, rather than constantly comparing the performance of one ethnic group or one learning group against another versus the standard. And we have that standard already existing in our expectation for career, college, career, and life readiness. We, it's a citywide standard that's been articulated and lots of people, both in the district, outside the district, are organized to it. And so if we can start thinking about that, that as our standard, what are the leading indicators for children who are reaching that standard? And then identify our gaps around that data will allow me to feel that we're much more focused on making the changes work we had the capacity to make and to be articulate about. So I just want to add that as, as, and Chairperson Oliver Dalva, thank you so much for reminding us this is an iterative process. This is not set in stone. We're not carving this into any granite anywhere near. This is, this is a policy proposal that we will use data to change as we see fit. So once again, I want to thank everyone for their great hard work. And Ms. Hogan and Dr. Grantson, it's been remarkable the amount of time and energy you've put to this. And we deeply appreciative of this and the variety of groups. And specifically, I want to thank the Opportunity Achievement Task Force led by our remarkable Ms. Robinson for the work they're doing to help us be clear. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. I think you, you hit the nail on the head, which is the discussion that we were having around adding that additional column of gaps, because we felt exactly what you said, that we want to be sensitive. You know, we don't want to compare, you know, different groups by race, ethnicity. Yes, we need to look at that, but we're really looking at what is the standard and then what are the gaps? So I think just being more sensitive, I agree. Ms. Mercer?
So my question, sorry. So my question was, so how long would it take for the goals and values to be circulated throughout the district? Like, is it some kind of like, like after you put it in place, you have a timeline to that?
So right now, the, the goals and values, we have targets for one, three, and five years. So we're going to be looking at, even though we have those, we're going to look at these every single year, like as a school committee, and be tracking that.
And then my other question to follow up that is, if you fall below your target, what would you do in response to that?
What a great question. So this is exactly the next piece of the work, the next steps, which are, we want to create a reporting, a template for our reports. We want to be able to hold ourselves accountable, so we will be able to move things. So let's just say that, you know, we're not meeting goal number one. We would come back and have conversations. The superintendent would present information to us on the target, on the metrics, you know, where we're at, and if we didn't meet it, what were the strategies that the district was taking? And then we would be having a discussion with her on what are the other strategies? And because we're also disaggregating the data, we'd also be able to see where different student groups are at and be able to better target strategies, resources to those groups. I don't know if you want to add anything, Monica, if I missed anything?
I think that's right, and we'll be able to do deeper analysis to try and understand if we can pinpoint where a certain strategy might be having more or less impact than we anticipated and work with the departments who are implementing those strategies to help understand and evaluate what they're doing. And if it's not helping us reach the target, what are adjustments that we can make?
And then to follow up that, so if that doesn't happen, would you also be getting community input such as parents and like educators and students along with that to see, to figure out what's going wrong or?
I think, yes, in terms of, one is we'll see the data, but we hope that this document is part of like ongoing conversations with the community where, you know, through avenues such as public comment, or we could see ourselves, you know, taking this back on the road again and asking families like, is this, you know, does this still work? Does this still resonate in the community? So like Dr. Coleman said, I think we see this like as an iterative process that can, we're all in a journey together. This is new for us. So we'll, we'll be, you know, making changes as we go along. And we always welcome feedback from the community. Dr. Grantson, I think wants to add something.
Yeah, no, I was going to say, just to reiterate, great question. And I think a part of what we've been talking about, that we're going to make sure we do is connect this to our strategic plan implementation work. And a lot of that, we've been working towards the public dashboard. And the superintendent is committed to the quarterly reports to the school committee. And so we should be able to see our progress as we go along and not before it's too late, not before it's, you know, we're at a point of not, not meeting a goal.
And then another quick question is, do you have like an exact date or month in which you're going to start implementing your goals and values? Or are you still thinking about that?
So once we adopt these, the next steps will be around creating the reporting template, aligning our agenda. So we're going to start, you know, we, these will be adopted. So we will begin our work and then we'll figure out at what points that the data will be presented to the school committee along the way.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your questions. Dr. Rivera?
So yes, I also want to just thank Dr. Grantson and Ms. Hogan, and being so many meetings going over this, and just thank you again. I do appreciate that, you know, again, being the co-chair of the English Language Learners Task Force, that, you know, there were significant updates in terms of the recommendations from our, our task force. And, you know, I will be supporting the goals and values, but I do want to express, you know, that I still have strong concerns and reservations around the measures for English learner student outcomes are still really like English proficiency standards, you know, in terms of the MCAS, you know, is only administered in, in English. And so this piece of maybe, you know, again, how do we really assess how students have mastered their content beyond standardized testing? And how is the school district thinking about, you know, alternative methods for, for measuring, right? Having different data that, that could drive these strategies beyond just standardized tests. You know, there's competency-based education, there's portfolios. I'm just curious, again, how the school district is thinking about some more accurate measures for English learner students? And also, the last thing is that, you know, I do agree that we have to keep disaggregating that data and just seeing, for example, the English learners' data broken up by the cultural and ethnic backgrounds of, you know, the, the students, that's super important so we can again have that deeper analysis. So I appreciate that. But I don't know if you could say something, Dr. Grantson or Ms. Hogan, about where the district is thinking in the future about these, you know, really addressing English learners' outcomes beyond just English-only standards?
Yeah, I know that there's been ongoing conversations over the past few years, and especially as the superintendent has brought about this vision of whole child liberal arts education, joyful learning environments. We've been talking about measures and assessments that don't currently exist that we need to look at and develop that really captures at the end of the day, what we want our children to be able to do and to know, above and beyond what's required in the state standards. And so I know that there are conversations about the portrait of a learner or a BPS graduate. And I think as we continue those conversations, my colleagues in academics and other parts of the of the district is very much connected to this work and I think is pushing us all and across the task forces and across our different central office departments to really like think through and wrestle with this idea of what those other measures are. And that's going to take a lot of work with the larger community and, and school leaders. Because of course, as we start to measure those things, we want to make sure that students and families and school leaders and educators feel set up for success to be able to write, to meet, to meet the standards of the new measures. And so I think that that is a work stream that is going to come out of this conversation we've been having over the last few months.
I'd also like to share, Dr. Rivera, a few other strategies we're doing as part of our ELL Look Act. And I know some of these you're very aware of is the work around our bilingual education and our SCI programming and working to provide greater opportunity for students in the bilingual education and more inclusive classrooms. Then there's the dual-language programming that we're doing as well, where we're working on students being able to use their language in a dual-language setting. And then the seal of biliteracy, which we are also doing at, at the district level as part of our ELL work. Those are very key pieces. And then on the cultural side of celebrating culture and heritage is our ethnic studies work and the development of the ethnic studies work. And then on the cultural side of celebrating culture and heritage is our ethnic studies work and the development of the ethnic studies work and collaboration. So those are all very asset-based programming that we are going to continue to move forward. Dr. Romero Johnson will be speaking to this soon, next month, in her presentation to the school committee. And so we're really excited about that work, although it's not measured here directly. It is part of our overall academic vision for the district.
And I'll just add two things about assessment tools. And we are currently reviewing our assessment strategy and trying to identify different ways of assessing students. And one of those is we received a grant from the Massachusetts Consortium for Innovative Education Assessment, MCIEA, to develop performance-based assessments. So we're stipending teams of teachers to think through how might we develop performance-based assessments and implement them at a district level. So that work is ongoing right now. And we're excited to see what might come of that. The state is also piloting, I believe it's an innovative assessment in science for MCAS, that we have some schools interested in understanding more about what that might mean for the future of standardized testing at the state level as well.
Thank you. Appreciate hearing all of that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. Mr. DiRusio?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So also want to say thank you to everyone for all the work. I know this has been a long process. I do have two questions. I've seen some of this kind of addressed in some fashion in some of the, some of the community sessions, but with respect to the targets, I understand we're allocating these percentages. And I'd like to hear just a more of a discussion of why, you know, why, why not a higher percentage? Why not? Because at some point, we're kind of implicitly saying, you know, we're gonna meet this part, you know, this year, but then in that year, you know, you know, some of our our students are not going to meet that part. We're not going to meet that part for those students. So if we can speak to that in respect to how we arrived at those percentages. And then, you know, in terms of the timing, you know, we're doing all this work right now to, you know, come back from COVID, come back and recover. Should this be a document that kind of reaches out? And I I kind of appreciate also talking about this as an iterative process. But, you know, the next, you know, 12 to 18 months is probably going to be continuing, continual, you know, very unusual time period of, you know, bringing folks back, back to school. Would it be better if we just kind of look at it in terms of like a temporary, more temporary than kind of, you know, multiple years out? So those are my two to comments and questions. Thank you.
And so I can respond to your questions about how we thought about targets. And and there's certainly an art to target setting, where you want to balance what is aspirational versus what is realistic and what where is the the right balance to make sure we're pushing hard enough, but not so hard that we never meet the targets? And so we looked at a combination of historical data as well as how the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education sets targets through the accountability system to inform increments that we set. We do know it is a hard time to set targets because our our baseline may be very different than it was from 2019 on a lot of these measures because of the pandemic. But we wanted to go ahead and set out a first, a first draft almost of incremental targets. And then revisit once we have an updated baseline of data to determine what is most what are the increments that we believe to be most achievable, particularly as decisions are made around where the investments of the ASR funding will go, that will drive where we think we'll make the most progress in different measures and can set differentiated targets in that way. I don't know if there's anything to add, Dr. Branson, or Madam Chair?
Nope, I I I think you summed it up, trying to do a little bit of a stretch goal in that we will have to go back and look at the baseline because of COVID. So it will, I I'm sure that it will change. Does that answer your question?
Appreciate that. I think, though, I guess I'll just put in layman's terms with that. Does it mean that we're not identifying the the cause, the causes for the effects that we want? In some sense, that I think, Dr. Coleman, I think articulated this in a much kind of, you know, more eloquent way, but you know, we were trying to find a measure, right, of what, you know, what is a BPS graduate? What do you get from 13 years of our services, or or four years or five years? And and then here we are, we're trying to measure, you know, are we, are we giving, are we giving our our clients, our our families, you know, the services that 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 we think that they, that they think that they deserve and that they should get from from a schooling system? So so maybe, maybe I'm just missing that piece as well, that the will this help us identify the causes? And actually, maybe, and I think this, this, yeah, sorry, I'll just, I'll leave it at that. Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I I think that this process is going to help us to dig deeper on some of these questions that we haven't had time as a school committee to go deep on, because we always have so much. So I believe that this process will help us to to, again, begin to like unpack and figure out, you know, what's working, what's not working. And then I think some of the questions like Dr. Rivera raised, there, there are conversations that we need to continue to have and that Dr. Coleman raised as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Robinson? You're muted.
Sorry. I just want to say, most of my questions have been asked, but I just wanted to thank you as well as Dr. Branson and Monica for all of your hard work, continuing hard work as we have come back again and again to continue to listen. I feel like we are at the very tip of beginning something new. We don't know yet how it's going, and we hope that the community will bear with us and continue to push with us and help support us as we're trying to become a more focused school committee and to dig deeper into these issues. And just like the conversation change, guardrails to values, to make it more simple, simply understandable. That is, we look at things, measures, and other things that we also are able to find more clearly understandable and accessible language, so that our partners, be they parents, students, others, also understand what it is that we're looking for and striving for together and to sort of demystify all of what has gone on. I mean, there are so many goals that we have because we really want the best for our students, no matter which, no matter who they are, no matter what grade level. And, you know, I know as much as what we have focused on, you know, so many people feel there's so many things we haven't focused on at all, but we can't focus on everything. So I hope that we will give ourselves some grace, as will the community, to work with us as we begin this process, which I feel will be very exciting and will, and hopefully will make all of us better and more focused as we, as we move forward. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Robinson. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Vice Chair?
I just want to comment on this process and thank the chair for her leadership on this. And I particularly want to thank those organizations that met with the chair and myself and other members of the committee multiple times to have the leadership of SpedPAC of being of the Opportunity and Chief McGap Task Force, the ELL Task Force. We delayed this process because even after our community meetings, they spoke up and wanted to give us feedback. And I really appreciate each of these groups opening the door and holding really, really thoughtful conversations where we had a chance to kind of dig in on these issues and understand viewpoints. I think the document is a lot stronger because of it, a a simple point being the feedback from some folks about the word guardrails versus values was hugely valuable. And, you know, words do matter. And I appreciate the chair's openness and the work of Dr. Branson and Ms. Hogan to really, and Ms. Sullivan, by the way, who was extraordinarily helpful and attended all these, facilitated and attended all these meetings as well. I think it is a much stronger document because we took the time to get that feedback, to hold those conversations. None of those groups wanted to imply an endorsement of this. They were careful on that. But they did want to give feedback and appreciated the willingness to adjust. I also want to say that I do share Mr. DiRusio's comments about particularly the five-year goals. And when I heard Ms. Hogan say, you know, a certain level like 500 is proficient, is perceived as proficient. To me, for our five-year goals, we should be, we should be aiming for that for all of our students and and not just settle on averages. But that's the type of thing we can find to, let's get this up and running. Let's start to track against it, you know. The superintendent, a a year ago, presented some data for the, to us for the first time that we were surprised, right? And and we reacted to and said, boy, we weren't used to seeing it this way. And think about how far we have come now that we're highlighting specific things, early literacy, middle school proficiency, progress for our students with disabilities, progress for our English language learners and college and career and life readiness for our students, picking big, meaty outcomes and thinking through in all of our various student subgroups, how they perform now and where we want them to improve. By looking at this on a regular, consistent basis, allows us to have much more informed conversations with the superintendent. And when the community knows we're looking at, you know, there's an old axiom and and in my corporate career, I've done a lot of work on this, where you inspect what you expect. Right? And this is us putting our foot down and saying what we expect for our students. And by inspecting that on a regular and consistent basis, we are sending a huge message to the superintendent and the district that will percolate. Ms. Mercy, you asked, how does this get to schools? I'll give you one quick example. For several years, the school committee asked every high school principal who came before them, do you have a BSAC representative on your school committee? By asking that on 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 your, do you have a BSAC representative from your high school? By asking that on a consistent basics, consistent basis, BSAC went from representing about five schools to representing just about all of our high schools. So when the school committee gets consistent upon what we ask, what we inspect, the message spreads pretty quickly that this is what our expectations are. And so I think this is a great step and 100% credit in my mind to to our chair for driving this process while she has also worked hard to facilitate as much input as possible. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair. Thank you for thanking Ms. Sullivan. I always forget to thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Thank you, thank you. So I also just wanted to get some comments from the superintendent because she was part of all of our public sessions. She she also was part of our retreats. And so I'd love to get your your feedback as well, Dr. Sullivan.
So I'm just super excited, Madam Chair, and all of the members, for you all leaning into this process to becoming a high-performing board. One of the first things of that that we learned from A.J. Crabill is that our consultant and thanks to the Council of Great City Schools giving us that pro bono support, which they give us a ton of support, is the fact that you have to set expectations and you have to be focused on student outcomes. And so this is the first way for the board to hold itself accountable to a subset of the overall strategic direction and to hold myself and my team accountable as well as we have shifted our practice within these meetings to be more student-focused, to present more data to the public, to be more transparent, and to use this as a tool to drive improvement. And so I just want to commend you. I want to commend my team for working with you and the really great work you've done to engage the community and taking time to just pause when you were moving forward with the goals, listen, and then adjust those so that the community felt heard and valued. And we really exemplified our strategic commitments of amplifying voice and cultivating trust. So I again want to commend you particularly, Madam Chair, for your work on on this, on these goals. I plan on working with Dr. Coleman and incorporating those in the future for my superintendent goals, so that we don't have a broad set of goals that we are doing, so that we can align even tighter these goals in the future and make sure that we bring them back, as Dr. Branson said, quarterly, and that you're getting regular updates and the public is getting regular updates on how we're holding ourselves accountable.
Thank you so much, Superintendent. Ms. Robinson, you have your hand up. Just wanted to check, is that from before? Okay. Just want to double check. So again, thank you, everybody, for all your input, external, internal, the school committee, et cetera. As we said before, we, this is not a perfect document. We are presenting something that as we move forward, we will continue to engage and have discussions and move things as we see they're working and not working and having conversations. So I just want to make sure everybody knows that, as Dr. Coleman said, it's not set in stone. But, you know, that saying, don't let perfect be the enemy of the good. We start somewhere and then we we change it as we see that it's working and not working, et cetera. So again, thank you, everybody. The committee looks forward to taking action on the goals and values later this evening. Thank you again, Dr. Branson and Ms. Hogan. We're now going to move on to general public comments, so I will ask Ms. Sullivan to come on. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, students, and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but I refer to the superintendent for later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have 21 speakers this evening. Each person will have two minutes to speak, and I'll remind you when you have 30 seconds remaining. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Those who require interpretation services will receive an additional two minutes. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name, affiliation, and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. Thank you for your cooperation. When I call your name, please raise your hand virtually in Zoom. Also, please make sure that you're signed into Zoom with the same name that you used to sign up for public comment. And that will allow us to identify you when it's your turn to testify. Our first speakers this evening are Jennifer Roberts-Ketty, Vanessa Morales, Travis Marshall, and Cassandra Cricklow. If you can, please raise your hands in Zoom. Jennifer?
Thank you. My name is Jennifer Roberts-Ketty, and I'm a parent and teacher at the Phineas Bates Elementary School in Roslyn Dale. I am speaking about inclusion. My son is in third grade, and I am the fifth-grade inclusion specialist. I work with two classroom teachers and alternate time in each room with one para-professional. In other words, each Bates classroom has 1.5 teachers and a 0.5 para. In addition to our principal, our administrative team consists of a full-time BCBA licensed inclusion coordinator and a full-time manager of student support and family partnerships. As I have learned more about inclusion throughout the district, I realized that the Bates has an advantage over many inclusion schools that have a staffing model of one teacher and one para. It is hard for me to imagine being the It is hard for me to imagine being the only teacher available to meet all of my students' specific academic needs, including rules-based reading and to complete the extensive paperwork and testing for I E P meetings. I feel fortunate to work within a more generous staffing model, including two additional adults on the admin team available to provide both crisis support and assistance with long-term support plans. However, even at the Bates, there are challenges with implementing certain services. Last year, I delivered rules-based reading instruction for eight fifth graders, limiting my time for co-teaching other subjects. At the same time, two fifth graders entered the school as beginning English learners requiring 675 minutes of weekly ESL instruction. These challenges demonstrate that our staffing model, while an improvement over the one teacher model, is insufficient to provide the level of services and academic achievement all of our students deserve. I have also learned that some schools have two full-time teachers in each inclusion classroom, along with a para in the lower grade, and that the schools with the one teacher model tend to have more students of color than the schools with 1.5 or two teachers per classroom. If B P S is serious about taking on systemic racism, then schools with a higher percentage of Black and Brown students should not have less staff and resources than schools like the Bates with a higher percentage of white students.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Vanessa Morales.
Hello.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Vanessa Morales and I'm from Dorchester. And I am a family advisory board member with School Facts Boston. I am also a foster parent for students in the Boston Public School System, especially students who are on I E Ps. Working with foster children who may have sustained significant trauma in their life and may have a hard time academically or social emotional support is even more critical for students like them. My concern today is this social emotional support needed for students as they return back to school. Also wanting to know how are the schools going to support our children who have may, who may have experienced a significant education slide or loss this year? As I continue, my concern is regarding high school students regarding their pathway for college and what career supports are there for them to build a positive future. If strategic support is not given to our students, they can easily get lost in the shuffle of COVID recovery planning. We don't want them to be forgotten or left behind. They need and deserve supports that assist them now and in their future endeavors. We ask that each school has a COVID recovery plan addressing social, emotional, the learning loss, and pathways to college and career for our high school students. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Travis Marshall.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Casellius, members of the committee. My name is Travis Marshall. I'm the parent of two Boston Public School students and I'm a member of Quality Education for Every Student Quest. A week ago, Quest released data on private individual school fundraising across 120 Boston Public Schools using reported figures from a 2018 Ernst &amp; Young Audit of School Activities Accounts, B E D F Accounts, Parent Council Accounts, and Associated Tax Exempt O one C three organizations. The data reveal large gaps between individual schools fundraising efforts and abilities. While a handful of schools had over $1,000 raised per student, most had far less than $100 per student and a number had less than 10. Roughly one-fifth of schools reported tax-exempt fundraising organization and those that did were most likely to raise larger amounts of money. Quest also compared 2018 enrollment totals and student demographic data with each school's private funds and found schools with the most money raised per student often had fewer students categorized as economically disadvantaged. In other words, schools with more wealthy families who have more connections to business and philanthropy can supplement resources for their students in a major way. A companion analysis found that disparities also fall along racial lines. With every 1% increase in students categorized as African-American and Hispanic, schools had 35 less in private funds per student. Quest believes in public funding for public schools and that unchecked private fundraising creates both, and both creates and exacerbates inequities between schools. As far as we know, this is the only public accounting of private fundraising across B P S. In a district that devotes an entire department to promoting equity, it should not fall to grassroots parent organization of volunteers to track this activity. Quest asks that B P S examine privately raised funds through an equity analysis in order to determine what measures might be taken to ensure student opportunities aren't contingent on the wealth of parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Our next speaker is Cassandra Crichlow. She'll be followed by John Mudd, Amanda Halthus, Michael O'Halloran, Ruby Reyes, and Edith Bazile. If you can all please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. Cassandra?
Good evening, Dr. Casellius and school committee members. I am a Boston Public Schools graduate and occupational therapist in B P S for 10 years. And I want to express my deep concern about the direction that B P S is taking with special education inclusion. My issues are mainly what are we doing regarding inclusion? Why are we doing it? How are we doing this and who is creating the policies? Back in about 2013, 14, we didn't have a clear vision of what inclusion meant then. And I feel like we still don't have a very clear position. In my opinion, inclusion isn't simply a staffing model for a classroom placement or a line on I P. Inclusion is a way of thinking and a way of viewing an educational experience. And as my 14-year-old niece would say, inclusion is a vibe, inclusion is a mood. And if we believe that, what work are we doing to build the culture of inclusion across Boston prior to closing certain programs and opening new programs? I don't know if we ever really did an analysis of the previous inclusion rollout and what did we find, what was effective, what was not effective? Are we doing this just so we can say that we are an inclusive school district? Or will we really be giving our students what they need and, and across the district regardless of zip code? I'm not sure how the seven schools were chosen for the inclusion expansion plan or how we were deciding about the early childhood inclusion rollout. But some of these changes are destined to take place next week in May. And I don't know where the feedback was for families. They need to be the priority, the driving force behind any changes that we make in policy. Where was the seat at the table for your related services providers and student support staff and educators? I feel like this plan needs to be built from the ground up to bowling and not imposed from bowling down to the classroom. And so I'm just asking for a clear vision of what our inclusion plan will be, an opportunity for all of us to really be involved or else we'll be here in 10 years trying to reimagine inclusion again. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Mudd.
Good evening. I'm a longtime advocate around the Boston Public Schools, live in Cambridge, Massachusetts, and also want to welcome her, if she's still here, Cyra Mercer, to the school committee. I wanted to thank you for listening on some key issues around the development of the goals and value statement. You strengthen the language and commitment to eliminate opportunity and achievement gaps as a primary goal. You clarified the inclusion will not mean dumping for special education students. You added a note that access to native language is critical for English learner success and you explicitly recognized the importance of professional learning. You add measures that will demonstrate progress in keeping your commitment to the community values like teacher diversity. And you listed the various marginalized groups, including English learners with disabilities, for which you will provide M C A S data for grades three to eight. All of that's good. We then had the controversy, I guess, in the last couple of days over inclusion of whites in, in the, in the data. And I assume that, given the PowerPoint, that is now something that will be included. I would say if one wants a criterion reference, you can talk about proficiency gaps. You know, that's something that Desi used. And in addition to the, to the achievement gaps. I believe, the reason I fight for this is I believe all students can achieve. I want to force myself and others to face up to the real reality of inequality and achievement gaps in order to demand that I and we do better as a society and a school district. We need to recognize our problems in order to deal with them and have the strength not to hide from them. I'm almost at, I think that we can do better on the process that got us here. We all know and you know that working with stakeholder groups to organize the listening sessions was the most constructive and I think led to a much better document. And I hope we can build on that in the future. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd. Our next speaker is Amanda Halthus.
My name's Amanda. I'm a parent. I have a six-year-old son at the Lee School and I live in Dorchester. My issues tonight are related to communication and delivery of I E P services. I have a son, he has Down Syndrome, high needs, visual challenges, comprehension challenges, physical challenges. The whole remote schooling was just a big empty space in his history that we'll look back on 10 years from now. So now that we're back in in-person school and compensatory services are being discussed everywhere, except I feel like at your school. I've requested a meeting to discuss compensatory services more than once. And I'm going to say this, a qualifier, I love the Lee, I love the team and I love my son's teacher. And I haven't heard anything back. My feelings are, is that the school doesn't have any guidance on how to deliver these services to kids with high needs that they are 100% entitled to. My son lost a lot of ground as a result of the pandemic because of his learning challenges. Remote instruction didn't work. I'm realistic about who he is as a person. It's not like he's in competition to catch up with all the kindergartners. He's just in a competition with himself. But he's in a window of time where he really needs the support. While we raise the issue of inclusion and like redefining inclusion for the Boston Public Schools, we have a whole population of really high-needs kids that are so lost that how can we push more inclusion when they need so much help and support just to get back into routine and to be part of the school community? And I mean, they really are kind of a group that's not in, they don't follow the same guidelines. So they just need a lot of help. And I feel like from the top down, there, if I can read the emails from Desi and look them up online, how come the Boston Public Schools can't? Thank you for my two minutes. Have a good night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael O'Halloran.
Hi, good evening. I'm Michael O'Halloran. I live in Dorchester and I work at the Everett School in Dorchester. And I just want to speak briefly about our experience with inclusion. We've rolled out a K to six inclusion over the past seven years. And on the whole, we absolutely love it. We think it builds confidence in the kids and strength and empathy in both students and teachers. We think it can really work and we're 100% a better school for it. We would never want to go back to the old way. However, two years ago, I gave up my job as a third-grade inclusion teacher and I accepted another job in the school. I still loved my job, but I didn't feel like I could do it. Even with 20 years of classroom experience, even with given the best effort that I had ever given in my career, I did suddenly feel like I was failing some of my students. I kept having the same conversation with parents. They would say things like, Mr. O'Halloran, I don't think my child's getting the services that they have in their I E P. And we'd sit and we'd go through the document together and I would explain that actually I was the one providing those services. I was both the classroom teacher and their special education teacher. And they were shocked, frankly, and they would say something like, okay, but if you're providing the services, who's teaching the rest of the class? And there's really no good answer to that question. I mean, common sense tells a parent that one person cannot be in two different places at the same time. They're right, that the current model of, that we have at the Everett of one teacher and one para in this inclusion classroom means that no matter how long and how hard you work, those necessary pieces are never, ever completely in place. Inevitably, corners get cut. We know that that shortchanges students. And you know, when we sit in these I E P meetings with a parent, we're making a legal promise and an ethical promise. We're acknowledging a disability and we're saying that we are going to do what it takes to make things work in that classroom, that student, despite the disability, so that they get all of the learning that everyone else is getting. And in order to do that, we need to work together to find a model that works, a staffing model that works, that's equitable, so that no I E P becomes an empty promise. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ruby Reyes.
My name is Ruby Reyes and I'm the director of the Boston Education Justice Alliance and a Dorchester resident. I want to congratulate the families, educators, and school communities who have worked tirelessly to get schools ready to be open for five days a week. I also want to welcome and congratulate our new B S A C School Committee student representative. The pandemic has proven that it costs more money and time to do things wrong. It has cost B P S time and money to let expensive consultants guide the reopening process as opposed to parents, students, and educators. It will continue to cost more time and money to treat equity as an afterthought as with the lack of analysis of the weighted student funding formula or not sharing an equity analysis on campus without walls until the pilot has already begun. This week, Beja Volunteers spent time making calls to families, letting them know that they can opt out of M C A S without penalty and they should be asking for compensatory services if they have a child with a disability because we know from families that they have not even been informed about these services existing. B P S should prioritize outreach and support to families. There are so many things that parents, students, and educators have had to deal with over the past year. We don't need more of the wrong thing. Beja Volunteers essentially did what B P S should have done and should be doing. Families should not have to ask. They should be offered every service possible. There should also be learning recuperation service plans for families and children in general education. This process of doing things wrong has resulted in 1,500 extended summer learning slots or compensatory services being left unused. When central office does not communicate to school communities, students, parents, and teachers bear the brunt of having to figure it out. This cycle of how you widen, this cycle is how you widen the opportunity and achievement gap. Those who know are those that get to make choices and that in itself is privilege, not equity. It is much more expensive to do things wrong. Beja once again asks school committee to join the 35 other school committees across the state who have signed resolutions to recommend canceling the M C A S, a simple act that costs you nothing and shows your support for the needs of families through this critical time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Edith Bazile and she'll be followed by Ava Multry, Bernie Wilkinson, Michael Heishman, and Sharon Hinton. If you can, please raise your hands virtually in Zoom.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I first want to congratulate Ms. Mercer. We're so excited to have you here representing students. And I also want to congratulate Dr. Casellius and her team on the school reopening as well as the exam schools case. My name is Edith Bazile, B P S graduate, long-term B P S educator and grandmother Lily, assigned to the Manning School. To paraphrase H L Mencken, for every complex problem, there is a simple answer and it is wrong. The McKinley Schools, B P S's therapeutic day schools are the lowest performing schools in the district, but it would be wrong to close them. The students at McKinley have not failed. Adults who created these broken school structures, policies, and practices have failed these students who have no gym, no library, no science labs, no cafeteria, and are greeted with metal detectors, school police, and searches. Police do not educate students, teachers do. Police do not foster healing from trauma. Therapists, social workers, and restorative justice does. Research shows closing schools attended by Black and Latinx students lead to permanent dropout. Students need now more than ever to stay in school. They need strong leadership that believes in them and cultural insiders who understand them. We are at an inflection point with the failures of special education, but the district must maintain educational options for all students. These options must yield high-quality academic outcomes. The district talks about, quote, "reimagining schools" and, quote, "creating joyful learning." You cannot have joyful learning if you do not spread joy to teachers. Research shows high-performing schools have, have strong teacher leadership and Black teachers matter. Success is rooted in high expectations, evidence-based interventions and supports, restorative justice, and aspirational curriculum with multiple literacies that lead to college and vocational access. Educating students to become globally responsible citizens with honor and integrity, socially conscious, committed to dismantling oppression, injustices, and inequities to create a more just world begins with adults who model these beliefs and practices. Finally, schools are more than just brick and mortar. It's the adults who bring them alive with high-quality education that is personal. It's the adults who bring them alive with high-quality education that is personalizing culturally responsive, safe, respectful, accessible and inclusive environments that build a foundation for lifelong learning and civic action. Please do not close the McKinley Schools. Reimagine them to become a vision of accountability to the McKinley students whom BPS has failed for far too long. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ava Multry.
Hello?
Yes, good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ava Multry. I live in Mission Hill. My child is a student, a K-2 student at an inclusion school, an inclusion classroom at the Baldwin Early Learning Center and has been for the past three years. Tonight I'm speaking because I believe there needs to be more staffing support in inclusion classrooms to meet the needs of all students. Speaking personally, my son would learn more and be more successful in his classroom if there was an increase in number of teachers to meet the needs, the needs that he has and the needs of other students in a room. Inclusion Done Right means that there are enough resources in every classroom for every child to thrive academically and socially emotionally. Just putting children with and without disabilities in the same room does not equal inclusion. Especially given the pandemic, our children need more emotional support. Every school should have a counselor who can work directly with the children and provide training for staffs for children who have emotional needs. I myself have studied education and now I'm studying psychology at UMass Boston and I'm trying to learn how to better support my child. Our educators need to have that same opportunity to go back into learning to see what's happening, to learn more about what's happening at the home schools. Finally, there needs to be more transparency around the services that the children can receive. My child's social emotional skills have decreased a lot. And only, and I haven't, I'm sorry?
20 seconds, excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. And I haven't heard much, uh, much about how they will support my child during this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bernie Wilkinson.
Hello, good evening. I'm Bernie Wilkinson. I'm with School Facts Boston. I am a Boston resident and parent. After reviewing the press release about the commission that is being formed to give input into how 400,000 plus or 400 million plus dollars will be spent by BPS, we have some notes to share. The framing of return recovery reimagined is a thoughtful and inspiring goal for us all. We respectfully challenge district leaders to reimagine what parent and student engagement looks like now and going forward. We propose that three additional parents and three additional students be added to the commission. Parents should be nominated by way of their school community, self-nomination and/or nominated by way of student and parent advocacy groups. The nomination form should go up on all BPS media and communication outlets as well as shared with other community partners. It seems that there are currently 31 people on the commission, which works out to about 0.7% student representation and 0.7% parent representation, two parents, two students. If it were to increase to five parents and five students, it would be about 16% parent and student representation. This would be more reasonable representation of the people that are 100% the end users of the system day in and day out. Logistically, three more people can be brought on. Nomination process can run 4:30 through 5:06. Phone interviews can take place on 5:7, 5:8, 5:9, 5:10. Invitations for folks to join can go out on 5:11 and they can attend meetings starting on 5:13. If they need to be brought up to speed, there's creative ways to do this. And we're asking that you can, will reimagine parent and student engagement during this historic and important time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Heishman.
Mike Heishman, Dorchester, Beja, welcome Zara Mercer to the Boston School Committee. I pledge my continued support for BSAC and you, dear student representative. The superintendent school committee should address their persistent adultism. You should establish a respectful relationship with BSAC, your student representative, and support all of BSAC's demands. Specifically, BSAC wants students, wants, deserves full control of their program. They want to, in their words, "work with the district, not under it." BSAC wants you to pass a resolution calling for Desi to cancel MCAS this year. This should have been done months ago. Additionally, you should inform the parents and students that they could opt out of MCAS this school year without any penalty. BSAC wants you to pass a resolution supporting their request that their representative had the vote and a $7,500 stipend. This should have been done months ago. If the superintendent school committee are truly committed to excellence for all, then all schools would be on the path towards excellence. The three exam schools are major obstacles to equity and must be transformed. Passing an exam as a requirement to enter a school gives a major advantage to privileged families that could provide more resources for their children, including funds for tutoring and test preparation. These schools should be open to all who wish to attend and a lottery should be designed that would promote diversity. I recommend that Boston Latin be renamed Boston Social Justice High School and Latin Academy renamed Social Justice Academy. I was very impressed with Campus Without Walls meeting that I recently attended. The interest of our students and their dreams for their future must become the center of their educational experience. My major concern is leadership that is planning this venture lacks participation from students, parents and the BTU. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Heishman. Our next speaker is Sharon Hinton. She'll be followed by Anna Shapiro, Callie Ledman, Domingo Storosa and Kevin Murray. If you can please raise your hands in Zoom. Sharon Hinton?
Good evening. My name is Sharon Hinton. I'm an educator, parent of a Yumein graduate who graduated with honors, who's now a graduate student at Northeast University. I'm also a doctoral candidate, a homeowner in Hyde Park and the president of Black Teachers Matter. I want to express my support for the Boston School Committee members regarding their communication, about better communication, about appointments and task force. I think that's important. I myself unfortunately experienced, while I was trying to join the Boston School Committee, a process that mirrored that. I found out about the process and who was actually appointed through the news media and not through a professional email saying that you were selected or you weren't selected. And so it's disparaging to hear that this is still going on, but it's encouraging that there are members of the Boston School Committee who are recognizing that and speaking up. I'd also like to congratulate Ms. Mercer as the Boston School Committee Student Rep. And I reiterate my support for a vote and compensation for that student rep moving forward, whatever it takes. Let's make it happen. Finally, I want to say that in this really wanting to reimagine and do something different, we have to, and get something different, we have to do something different than what we've been doing. And so the process for allocating the funds through the federal grant, I acknowledge that the superintendent is the final decision-making, but I'm wondering where the checks and the balances are on the final decision-making. Are we in the position where we're just advising and there's no stopgap way of really disagreeing in a significant way, moving things forward? I love this superintendent, I think she's great. The school committee has been doing a daunting and Herculean task in an unprecedented pandemic. However, if we're going to have things done differently, then we've got to do something differently or not. It's just the definition of insanity. So where are the checks and balances? What is the timeline line? And let's be a little bit more transparent for those people who really want to be engaged in the process, especially parents and teachers and community members. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anna Shapiro. Is Anna with us? Okay. We'll go to Callie Ledman.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
My name is Callie Ledman. I am a second-grade inclusion teacher at the Conlee School and a parent of a child with a disability in an inclusion setting in the Boston Public Schools. I am deeply concerned with our district's inclusion model specifically as it relates to equity. This is my 16th year of teaching and my fourth year of teaching inclusion. At my school, I have 20 students, five of them deemed inclusion based on number of minutes in their IEP and 15 typically developing students. However, there have been several years where I have had students with IEPs in my room that were not occupying inclusion seats but still received services in the area of reading and math. During these years, my classroom at its max had 10 students on IEPs and 10 that were not. These numbers also do not include the students in my room that may have ESL services and undiagnosed disabilities, which can often become more apparent by the time those students reach second grade. At the Conlee School, like most other schools in BPS, to my knowledge, we have an inclusion model that includes myself and a paraprofessional. Legally, it is my responsibility to deliver IEP services that typically include 120 minutes of ELA instruction, 90 minutes of math instruction and 30 minutes of self-regulation instruction while also meeting the needs of all of my other students. Even though I am a veteran teacher, I am truly perplexed at how it is humanly possible, given the current standard inclusion model in the Boston Public Schools, to deliver these IEP minutes in a small group or supportive way that targets each of my students' individual IEP goals while also ensuring that I am meeting the needs of all my other students. For those outside of BPS, here is what my classroom actually looks like. My paraprofessional often ends up supporting students that are struggling to a degree where they need one-on-one support due to functioning so far behind academically. These students often performing on a kindergarten level. I then have a group of students, some inclusion, some that are not, at my, with me at my small table. This can be upward to seven or eight students. The rest of my students that are performing closer to grade level are working at their desks independently. I worry that this way of teaching children with disabilities along with typically developing students is inequitable. Everyone loses, the teacher loses and feels like a failure. The students with disabilities lose, the typically developing students lose. I'm speaking to you today because it is my belief that parents and communities are unaware of the realities of what an inclusion classroom looks like in BPS. We need to understand that in order to fix the inequities that have been made apparent by the pandemic, it is time for us to do better. I urge you here to make a commitment to our students, families, teachers that makes a two-teacher model the standard for inclusion classroom in the Boston Public Schools. A two-teacher model would be a big first step to putting equity at the forefront and making the Boston Public Schools a district where all students are provided with a staffing model that supports our needs regardless of race and income.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. I see that Anna Shapiro is with us, so we'll try to unmute her again. Ms. Shapiro?
Hi, sorry about that. I disconnected. I'm Anna Shapiro. I teach science at Charlestown High School, soon to be Charlestown 712. And the teachers I work with, like the educators I've had the pleasure to work with in the Inclusion Done Right Committee, believe in inclusion. We know inclusive classrooms are best for students and that including students with different types of abilities helps all students in the room grow when inclusion is truly supported. My coworkers and I also share a clear definition of what inclusion done right looks right, what our district sometimes refers to as the O'Hearn Model. The model includes two teachers, one to prepare the lesson, one to modify the lesson. Both teachers should meet together to assess how their students are doing, track progress, make adjustments. In this model, this is a model that educators I work with believe in. We want to be a part of it. What we don't believe in is using the word inclusion to encourage teachers to get multiple licenses but not adequately staff inclusion models. And all too often, this is what educators in our district are being pushed to do. I've had the privilege of co-teaching with both a second teacher and with a parent. My students with IEPs have consistently learned more and been better served in the two-teacher model where we've had the time and expertise to co-plan. While our school has many strong parents, they're not typically trained in inclusion or given any additional planning time to modify or co-plan. So it's not true co-teaching and the student results are often less strong. Our district knows the O'Hearn Model works. We see it at the Henderson. We see the Mozart, which is one of the schools adding inclusion, is pursuing this model. But what about the other schools that are expanding inclusion where the majority of students are Black and Brown? Don't all of our students deserve this model? BPS's comparison of Desi demographics and the research of inclusion models done by our committee group shows that as the percentage of white students increases, the better staff the inclusion models are. So if we really are concerned with being an anti-racist district and serving all learners, we need to prioritize two-teacher models across our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Domingo Storosa. But there is no one signed into this meeting under that name. So we will move on to our next speaker. Kevin Murray. Mr. Murray will be followed by Anna Rosenblatt, Carne Churnow, Sherry Hall and Madeline Doherty. If you can please raise your hands. Mr. Murray?
Thank you. First, I'd like to congratulate and thank Ms. Mercer for being willing to serve on this committee. Know that you have the support of Mass Advocates for Children and many in the community behind what you're trying to do on this committee. So thank you. My name is Kevin Murray. I'm here tonight as Executive Director of Massachusetts Advocates for Children. I'm a Roselandale resident and a proud retired BPS parent. I think one of the good things about speaking later in the evening is that I can really summarize what I was going to say because many of the points I was going to make have been made. We, like many of the people that have spoken tonight, really see the importance of the quality of relationships between schools and their students and families as we go through this process of returning to school. We wonder however, if the language and the model of family engagement, as it's now being understood in the BPS, is really up to that task. We would like to see the BPS, for the next period of time at least, take on the commitment of family accompaniment during this period of return to school, redefine the nature of its desired relationships with its families and students and reimagine those relationships. Yes, that will take additional resources, considerable additional resources. But if ever there was additional resources available, this is the time when they are. We also want to echo the comments made earlier about compensatory services. The number of families, special education families that have actually received hearings is for us disturbingly low. And we don't believe that there's been an active effort on the part of the district to reach those families. The summer would be a wonderful time to provide those compensatory services to families who want to take that route. And in many cases, that opportunity is going to be lost because those families haven't had that opportunity for a discussion about the services they require. My time's up. I'll let it go there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anna Rosenblatt.
Hi, everyone. I'm Anna Rosenblatt from Alston. I am a parent. I want to speak about the situation in Baldwin Early Pilot Academy in Brighton-Alston. Five teachers have been accessed from the school. My daughters were taught by four of these teachers and I can testify that all of them have excellent educators that were absolutely indispensable in my kids' education. They made positive impact on my daughters and went above and beyond to teach them effectively, especially during the pandemics. Once we found out about the accessing of teachers, me and my husband were shocked and saddened. We attended the school governing board meeting in February. On that meeting, we heard a lot of parents speaking on behalf of the teachers and also we heard staff members being distressed about the situation in the school. Apparently, the new principals has a very dictatorial approach to running the school. What used to be a warm collaborative environment turned into a place where teachers are afraid to speak up or contradict any of principals' ideas. We were given absolutely no answers at that meeting. After the meeting, we were certain that the board would take action to look into the situation and will reverse this unfair decision. But absolutely nothing seemed to have happened in the last two months. Because of this, I started the petition to rescind the decision of accessing teachers from Baldwin. This petition has circulated around current and past Baldwin parents and gained support of 120 signers, which is a lot, especially considering Baldwin is a small school. I shared the petition with the superintendent, the members of school committee, and the city council. So far, I got no replies. I urge you to look into the situation. To conclude, I just want to say that it's extremely upsetting that voices of so many parents are not being heard and that our best teachers have been throughout our school. The parents and the teachers of Baldwin want answers. And finally, I just want to express my gratitude to all the teachers that taught my kids. You guys are amazing and we really appreciate your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Harneen Chernow.
Good evening, Superintendent Casalias and members of the Boston School Committee, and welcome to our new BSAC rep. We're excited you're here. My name is Harneen Chernow. I live in Jamaica Plain and have two kids in BPS, and I'm speaking here as a member of the Parent Group Quest. I am here to talk about Quest's recent report analyzing private fundraising inequities between schools. As you heard earlier, Quest reviewed the 2018 Ernst &amp; Young Audit of School-Specific Fundraising to try and unpack the role and impact of private fundraising across Boston Public Schools. What we found was extremely troubling. The data shows stark disparities in the amount of funds that different schools raise. Not surprisingly, those schools with a wider and more affluent population who have access to outside resources also raised the largest amount of private funds, meaning those with the least privilege and opportunity are left further behind. Many families and advocates were surprised at the data shared in our report. Most of us didn't know that BLS has a $60-plus million endowment or that some schools like the Elliott raise over $400,000 a year. While as public school families, we all live and pay taxes in the same city, we clearly don't have access to the same riches and opportunities when it comes to our school. My own situation is a good example. Of the two elementary schools my kids attended, one raised $9 of private funds per student while the other raised 66, both far below the $300 per student raised by many K8s. And at my kids' high school, the amount raised per student is $1,236, which is much more than the $50 or $200 raised per student at many high schools in Boston. The data raises a number of troubling questions. While this audit was done in 2018, why has there been no public presentation or discussion of the results today? To date, what guardrails or remedies will BPS introduce to address these massive disparities? What does it mean that schools need to rely on private fundraising and resourced parents to ensure their students get the needed programs that are critical for a quality education? And where is the transparency in the budgeting process documenting what these private dollars are paying for? We look to BPS and the school committee to move forward with urgency in resolving these questions with equitable solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sherry Hall.
Hello, my name is Sherry Hall, and I'm here as a parent of a sixth-grader student at Young Achiever School in Meda Pen. I am also an early childhood educator for ABCD Head Start. I am speaking to you this evening because I am concerned about not enough teachers or staffing to meet the needs of my child and other students in school. And now I am understanding that my school is facing a budget cut as well. During the time of the pandemic, I appreciated how the teachers recognized the efforts of each student, because I'm going to include my daughter as well. Each student by sending a special basket of gifts showing all the effort and work that they were doing by classes on Zoom. The teachers and the administrator at Young Achievers worked really hard. Before the COVID, I volunteer in my daughter's classroom. I saw with my own eyes how the classroom teachers are pulling between trying to support students who, at the time, are showing challenging behavior while at the same time being the only one presenting to instruct the class. I am not blaming anyone or saying that the staff are not doing their job, which they are. But there needs to be at least an additional staff person, preferably another teacher, so that the needs of each children can be met. No matter what else is going on, my school needs more fundings, not cuts. I am here tonight asking you leaders, because leader, the word leader to me is valuable for changes in how inclusion programs is implanted in our schools. It's very important to me to meet all child as an educator, to meet all the children's needs. And I'm here in Boston Public School at this time. I'm asking you as leaders to recognize this, the need of the student and education. Young Achievers.
Ms. Hall, your time is up. If you could, please wrap up. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Young Achievers, which I love, where 99.5% of the students are black and brown can now have this same model. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Our final speaker is Madeline Doherty.
Hello, my name is Madeline Doherty. I am a teacher at the Jackson Man K-8 in Austin. I teach K-0, K-1 students in the ADA strand. And I'm here to ask about two things regarding the future of the Jackson Man School community. First, as you must know, our current principal will not be at the Jackson Man next year. I'm asking, what is the plan for hiring a new principal? And when and how will we be starting the principal hiring process? I'm also here to ask about the general future of the Jackson Man. Dr. Casalias and her team met with us earlier this year, and we received few concrete answers at that time. We continue, as we have for the past few years, to request honesty and transparency from the district regarding the future of the Jackson Man. We also continue to request that you include students, families, teachers, and community partners in your planning. I am asking again, what progress has been made regarding the plan for the Jackson Man School community? Will we be moved to a swing space? If so, what actions have been taken toward finding such a space? If not, what is the plan for Jackson Man students and what is the timeline for this process? Tonight, I've heard an overarching theme of people requesting more parent and student involvement and more transparency just overall in Boston Public School dealings with staff, students, the community. And I really hope that you all are kind of hearing that and listening to that, that people really want to be involved and people want to know what is going on. So, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that concludes our speakers for general public comment.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sullivan. And thank you to everybody who spoke this evening and shared your perspectives. Your testimony is very important to us. So we're going to move to our first action item this evening, which is grants for approval totaling $1,107,554. And I would like to now open it up to the committee for any questions or comments. Again, please raise your hand in the box or put in the chatroom and please remember our five-minute reminder rule. Any questions, comments? Okay, none. If there's no further questions, then I would like to entertain a motion to approve the grant as presented.
Thumbs are moved.
So that's a first and a second. Thank you. And is there any discussion or objection to this motion? Ms. Sullivan, can you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. DeRusio?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
The grant is approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Our next action item is a memorandum of agreement between the Boston School Committee and the Boston Teachers Union regarding family liaison classification, which Mr. Hassan presented to the committee earlier this evening. And I will now open it up to the committee for any final questions or comments. Okay. If there's no questions, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Boston School Committee and the Boston Teachers Union regarding family liaison classification as presented.
Thumbs are moved.
Sounds like a first and a second. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, can you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. DeRusio?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Our next action item is interim salary and non-personnel payments on external funds. You will recall that Deputy Chief Finance Officer David Bloom brought this annual request to the committee at our last meeting. And now I will open it up to the committee for any final questions or comments. Hey, there are no further questions. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the interim salary and non-personnel payment order as presented.
Thumbs are moved.
First and second. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, can you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. DeRusio?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Our next action item is the revised attendance policy. And you will recall that Mr. Marx, Senior Director of Opportunity Youth, presented the superintendent's revised attendance policy to the committee at our last meeting. And I would like now to open it up to the committee for any final questions or comments. Okay. If there are no further questions, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the revised attendance policy as presented.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Is there a second?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there any discussion or objection to this motion? Okay, Ms. Sullivan, can you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. DeRusio?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Our final action item this evening is the school committee's goals and values, which we received a full presentation on earlier this evening. And I will now open it up to the committee for any final questions or comments. If there are no further questions, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the school committee's goals and values as presented.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
I think that was Ms. Robinson's second. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, can you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. DeRusio?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and thank you again to Ms. Hogan and Dr. Grantson and all stakeholders who participated in this process. And also, again, the vice chair for all his support. Our main report this evening is an equitable policy review. At this time, I would like to invite Dr. Charles Grantson, Chief Equity and Strategy Officer, to please present this report.
Sorry, I had to find a mute button. Thanks, Cher, and good evening again, committee and superintendent. I'm going to attempt to share my screen now. Okay, let's see. Are you all able to see the presentation? Okay, great.
Yes.
Sorry, I can't tell. All right. So I'm very much looking forward to sharing with the committee today and having this conversation about and highlighting the policies that are under the superintendent's leadership since her first arrival to the district. She's been committed to reviewing BPS policies to ensure the equity lens and to ensure that we're promoting equitable learning environments for all students, especially those who have been historically marginalized to close opportunity and achievement gaps. Okay. Bear with me, having trouble navigating here. Okay.
And while you're navigating, sorry, I apologize, Dr. Grantson. Dr. Casalias, is there anything? I'm so sorry. I should have asked you if you wanted to say anything before we started this presentation.
Oh, yeah, I can say it at the end, but I just wanted to introduce and just speak a little bit about the policies and the reason we're bringing all of the policies now as we began to think about the overarching goal of the school committee to be high-performing and setting expectations. And of course, that isn't having very transparent and clear policies that have all been reviewed with an anti-racist lens as well as a frequency on when we update them regularly. There are some policies that I noticed when I first came that as superintendent that needed to be addressed critically. And then also, we've suspended some policies recently. You just passed the attendance policy as permanent. There are a number of other policies that Dr. Grantson is going to introduce and the process for review of policy. As we bring them forward and update all of our policies, get them on the web so that the public can see them and they're easily accessible so that then we can have the circulars that go with them and do training with our school leaders. So with that, I'll turn it back to Dr. Grantson.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent. So as the superintendent mentioned during this presentation, we hope to provide you with our thinking around our charge for equitable policy review, the policies in question, and the next steps around the work, including how the public can continue to engage with us moving forward. And as we move towards more equitable policy, we know that it's important to provide professional learning and support to drive educator practice and improve the student experience and student outcomes. Our guiding policy, the 2016 Opportunity and Achievement Gaps Policy, provides a framework and the moral imperative for our work as district leaders and educators to ensure that we are neutralizing the barriers of poverty and racism so that every child has the opportunity to achieve the greatness within them. The culture of inequitable and deep-seated, the culture of inequity is deep-seated, whether intentional or unintentional, will require all who are responsible for the success of children to reframe policy and practice in a way that honors the assets of the students and the families we serve and the assets that they bring to the schoolhouse. Goal five of the OAG policy specifically addresses identifying and dismantling cultural, structural, racial, and social barriers that could hinder their access to high-quality learning and environments. Our strategic vision, Imagine BPS 2025, Commitment 1.1 says that we will ensure that BPS policies, plans, and budgets advance the OAG policy. And one of the ways we self-check for anti-racist policy, planning, and practice is to use the racial equity planning resource as outlined on the right side of this slide to ensure that we are to ensure that we are planning for racial equity at every stage and at every level. It's also important that we prioritize racial equity planning as an anti-racist practice for equitable outcomes. Engaging in policy revision with an anti-racist lens is the first step toward shifting educator and leader practice to achieve equitable learning environments and outcomes for our students. As a part of the policy revision efforts, we'll also work with Ms. Sullivan, Executive Secretary of the Boston School Committee, in partnership with the Mass Association of School Committees to put all of the policies online. The newly revised policies accompanied by, will be accompanied by a district equity analysis as we strive toward greater, strive toward greater transparency for district policy. We will leverage the technology for school boards that exist for a more interactive experience for the public to interface with the School Committee. The Superintendent, the Chair, and the Committee are in discussions also about a policy on subcommittees, which would include the district's current task forces to formalize the relationships between the bodies. As the Committee will remember, and as the Superintendent mentioned, at the height of the pandemic, the Superintendent raised the need to suspend certain policies that would inhibit student success during remote and hybrid learning or that were not operationally feasible given our COVID limitations. The promotion, retention policy, graduation policy, and advanced work-class policies are some examples of the policies currently under revision as we take this opportunity to ensure that our policies meet the new pandemic context as well as meeting our expectations for being an anti-racist district. Here you'll see the policies and a complete list of policies that we are beginning and that are currently underway and that we'll continue to review throughout the process. The Committee approved the student data and privacy policy after many months of revisions and inputs in the working group. And the Committee is scheduled to, well, I should say, just voted on the revised attendance policy this evening. For the policies in progress, there are working groups or committees or teams of individuals working on revising the policies. Notably, our graduation policy is being tackled by a team looking at MasCor and getting to greater equity, consistency, and high standards across our high schools is a goal there. For our proposed policies, you'll note the Opportunity and Achievement Gaps Policy as the policy itself within the language calls for that policy to be updated every six years. And I know this has been on the agenda of the Opportunity and Achievement Gaps Task Force in recent months and something that the task force is going to work with our Opportunity Gaps Office and district leadership and Superintendent to revise, to propose. A new policy area that is very much about meeting the needs of all students, but our students with high needs especially, will be the multi-tiered systems of support and student support teams in schools. And then lastly, I'll say that as we strive to become an anti-racist district, we are looking at codifying some of the great work already underway, including a policy on our school-based equity roundtables and a policy on diversity in hiring. There are going to be a number of ways that we're going to engage with stakeholders and providing input for the review and revision of policy above and beyond many of the working groups. This includes through our Equity Roundtables at the district, school, and community levels and working with our school leaders, our frequent engagement stakeholders and advisors, our English Learners Task Force, our Opportunity and Achievement Gaps Task Force, the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee, the District English Learners Advisory Committee, and our Citywide Parent Council, to name a few. As I mentioned earlier, it's going to be critical for us to provide training and support for students, educators, school, and district leaders so that we can rise to the challenge of creating more equitable policies and living them. And then finally, we wanted to share with you a tentative timeline for when the Committee might receive the proposed revised policies with MasCor policy coming up in June and exam schools and advanced work class in July. And we'll continue to engage and develop over time and have a rolling revision of the policies that you saw listed in this presentation in the upcoming school year. And with that, I will pause for questions.
Thank you so much, Dr. Grantson. Before we move into questions, I just want to provide the Committee with a quick update on the creation of the Committee's policy manual. The legal advisor just finished a first review of the draft manual, making edits, including looking at the actual city charter and other statutory language where applicable. The next step is to separate policy from circulars and identify any gaps. I want to especially thank Ms. Parvex for scanning years' worth of Boston School Committee policies. No small job there. We look forward to wrapping up this project soon. And the Vice Chair and I are also doing demos and we did also, I should mention, with the Superintendent as well, looking at demos with online board management systems. And we will keep you all updated in terms of the final selection. So I'd like to open it up now to the Committee for any questions or comments. Again, if you want to raise your hand or put it in the chat and a reminder that we have a five-minute time limit. Dr. Coleman, please go right ahead.
I just want to affirm the importance of this work and how delighted I am to doing it as we move for more coherence and consistency across our application. This is the deep work that needs to occur. So I thank you for the time and energy you're putting into it on top of all the other multiple tasks you have on your desk. Better, more time urgent.
Oh, Ms. Robinson, go right ahead.
Yeah, I just want to echo Dr. Coleman's remarks. This is something we've been talking about ever since I came on to the Committee about really, you know, both trying to figure out where all the policies are and why they haven't been updated over the years. I mean, I can only imagine some of the things we're not discussing right now that have been longstanding in the Committee. And I often felt that sometimes we create our own problems with outdated policies. So I'm very happy that we are beginning this process and look forward to participating in it.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Any other questions or comments? Okay. And I would say, agreed with you, Ms. Robinson and Dr. Coleman, as long as I've been on, we've been talking about this. So we're very excited. And I would say, you know, that we, it's great that we have a superintendent that's aligned with us on this work. And I just want to appreciate her as we look at all of the coverage in some of our recent news articles about many superintendents leaving their post. I want to really appreciate her for this alignment and for sticking with us. And it's been a really tough year. And I think this is just, I use this as an example of the alignment that we started to talk about, you know, before my time. So I can't take credit because it's been going on. But that she came in and actually agreed that this was really important for not just the School Committee, for the district and for the public. So the public will be able to access all of our policies. They'll be able to look at it. And thank you, Mr. Tran, for all your work because I know you also did a lot of work behind the scenes. Thank you very much. So with that, we are going to now move on to public comment on reports. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. We have no speakers for public comments on reports.
Okay, thank you so much. Any new business? Okay. So this concludes our business for this evening. The next School Committee meeting will take place on Wednesday, May 12th at 5:00 PM on Zoom. And if there is nothing further, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting. So moved. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Is there any discussion or objection to this motion? Ms. Sullivan, can you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes, have a good evening, everybody.
Mr. DeRouge?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes, good night.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Good night.